The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, both to those who are in the hearing room in Brisbane and those who may be following us on the live stream. This is the third day of public hearing thirty one of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This week we are dealing with the theme, A Vision for an Inclusive Australia. We commence as always with the acknowledgement of country and I'll ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country.
We acknowledge me in Brisbane. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of both Turrbal and Jockera nations. We acknowledge the Turrbal and Jockera nations as the traditional custodians and owners of the lands upon which this Royal Commission is sitting. We acknowledge and pay our deep respect to elders past and present, and we acknowledge First Nations young people who one day will take their place as elders. We extend that respect to all First Nations people and acknowledge their enduring connection to land, sky, seas and waterways. We pay our deep respect to First Nations people here today and who are following this public hearing online on the mainland and on islands, including Tasmania and Torres Strait, especially elders, parents and young people with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Miss Eastman.
Good morning Commissioners and to everyone following the proceeding in the room and also online. So, Mr Fraser is going to take our first witness this morning. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, the first witness this morning is Dr Fiona Rolata, and Dr Rolata has been affirmed already.
Yes, Dr Rolata, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission in Brisbane to give your evidence today. Thank you also for your statement, which we have, and each of us has read that statement. We're grateful to you for that. If you would be good enough to follow Mr Fraser, he will now ask you some questions. Thank you.
You are Dr Fiona Rolata?
Yes.
And you provide a written statement to this commission dated five December two thousand and twenty two?
Correct.
The contents of that statement, true and correct for the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
And you are a senior lecturer at Flinders University within the College of Nursing and Health Sciences. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how long have you held that position?
Since March two thousand and eleven, so it's nearly twelve years.
And the focus area of your research and teaching are disability and community inclusion?
Mm hmm.
And in particular, inclusion of individuals with disabilities. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Intellectual disability, sorry.
Okay. And with that in mind, in your statement, you have a copy of that thing?
Yes.
At paragraph six, you've set out what you refer to as your vision for people with intellectual disability accessing university. Can I ask, what is that vision?
Okay, so to start off with, I believe everyone has the right to access education at all levels. And based on my research and my work within our Up the Hill Project at Flinders University, my vision is for people with intellectual disability to be afforded the same opportunities, to be able to apply for university, to be able to access university and to be supported to succeed at university. So I'd like to see that the university systems and structures enable, empower and facilitate access for people with all abilities and on equal basis with their peers. And to do that, I believe that universities need to be properly equipped to be able to support people with an intellectual disability and to open their doors to more people. And this means not just by way of resources for physical access such as a ramp for a wheelchair. This means access at all levels and everywhere. So, for example, creating easy English versions of policy documents and instruction manuals for enrolment into university and for all the stages as part of that process.
You mentioned there the Up the Hill Project. Now, you're the academic advisor of the Up the Hill Project, is that right?
That's right.
Now, this is a program where persons with cognitive disability attend the university and audit audit subjects. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you tell us a little bit more about the program? How does it work sort of day to day? What does a student do?
Sure. So, students with cognitive disability are partnered with a learning partner to access the university campus and to be supported to use the facilities at university. They attend lectures or they watch them and access them online. Since COVID, that's been happening a lot. They access the learning system online and they also attend some tutorials and join discussions with their peers and they make use of the resources on the campus. So that could be the library, the eateries, everything that the university has to offer.
And is it correct that in terms of the number of subjects they audit, the course runs over or the program runs over three years?
That's correct.
And a student takes or audits one subject per semester?
Correct, one subject per semester.
You mentioned that this participant, if I call them participants of the program, is paired with a learning partner. What's the role of a learning partner?
So the learning partners as part of the Up the Hill Project are also undertaking their own studies in a particular degree. They are doing this as part of their work experience placement and they are assessed on their performance and evaluated. The degrees they're enrolled in is usually the Bachelor of Disability and Developmental Education or Bachelor of Disability and Community Inclusion. Some are enrolled in Bachelor of Behavioural Science with a major in disability. So their purpose is to learn more about disability and to engage in that partnership with the Up the Hill Project participants.
And are the learning partners remunerated?
Learning partners are not paid, but they do receive a grade towards their degree.
And on average, how or how much time will the learning partner spend with a participant?
So it's really individualised and that's up to the participant and it can range from two hours per week through to five hours or slightly more if they decide to meet online or on campus, off campus, et cetera. So from two to five hours per week usually.
Coming back to the program more generally, what's the ultimate objective of the Up the Hill Program?
So the program focuses on social and emotional outcomes. So it's not focused on the intention of an employment pathway or pathways to further study. So we really focus on self-development, self-confidence, self-determination and building social networks as being part of that community and having that sense of belonging at a university campus.
Now, the program, as I was saying, was first established in around nineteen ninety nine. Why was it first established? What was the purpose for it being established?
Sure. So around twenty-three years ago, there was a pilot program established by an honours student as part of her thesis. And it was recognised that people with intellectual disability don't usually transition to university like their peers when they finish school. And the question was, why not? And also it was recognised that the people with an intellectual disability can also benefit from the supports and services that a university offers. And once again, so the question was proposed as to let's give this a try and see how it goes. And the reason why people with intellectual disability are not usually seen to transition to university is because society never really.
Can I just follow then a little bit?
Sure. Sure. So the reason they thought people with intellectual disability couldn't go to university was because society doesn't often believe that people with intellectual disability could or should go to university because of their abilities. And so there was very low expectations of post-school options for people with intellectual disability.
Now, coming to the present day program, who is able to participate in the program? Who's eligible?
So it's adults, so eighteen plus who have a cognitive disability and who are eligible for NDIS.
And what do you see as being the benefits of the program in terms of increasing inclusion at the university?
So, from our research and from what our participants tell us and the development we see in them over the three years, we recognise that it's about being part of an existing mainstream community. It's not about a separate program or being special, specialised or segregated. It's about being part of the community and having that sense of belonging. We recognise that the participants build their self-confidence because they're interacting with their peers. They participate in classes in the same way that other students do. For example, in a tutorial, when students are put into small group discussions, they'll be included in those small groups and they benefit from the learning from each other. So it's a two-way where the mainstream students and the students with intellectual disability learn together.
And do you perceive or have you observed a benefit for teaching staff in the program as well?
Absolutely. So for teaching staff, we've got some really great examples where they've been able to increase their awareness of what people with an intellectual disability are capable of. Initially, there may be some sort of lack of knowledge, lack of awareness, some attitudinal concerns around expectations of people with intellectual disability. And they might think they can't participate in my class, that won't be possible, they'll be disruptive, they won't understand the content, et cetera. However, once they're given the opportunity, by the end of it, they actually recognise the abilities of people with intellectual disability. And an example of that is one staff member who at first didn't really want the person in their class, was concerned, wasn't sure that it was the right fit, et cetera. However, by the end of it, that teaching staff member opened their eyes to actually recognise that the student in her class was really talented and subsequently invited her to put her work at an arts exhibition with her peers. So actually recognising those skills, those abilities, those talents, just like the other students and being invited to an exhibition in that way, just like the other students as well. So really big attitudinal shift as a result of having that student in their class.
Are you aware of any similar programs where they're operated by or run by a government or other universities in Australia, similar to the Up the Hill Program?
So the only other program that I am aware of is the UniToBeyond program at the University of Sydney run by the Centre for Disability Studies. And so there are only two of Australia's forty-three universities that have such support in place for students with intellectual disability. I believe other universities don't have it because they have a lack of awareness or lack of resourcing or they don't believe that it's sort of part of their core business.
If I come back to your university and your program, how many participants are there currently in the program?
There are currently fourteen. Next year, there will be fifteen.
And how many participants have been through the program?
So we've had about forty-six who commenced and around about thirty who have graduated after the three years.
Is there a waitlist for the program?
Correct. There's a lot of interest. We haven't been able to provide entry for all of those who've been interested. There's probably around thirty-five people on that waiting list who are ready to go and eligible to join the program. Some people have needed to wait maybe two years before they can actually commence.
Now, are participants in the program, do they enroll as students as such or are they ordered the program?
No, that's right. So they do not enroll as students. They are considered as auditing students, which means they're at university participating in a topic for personal interest. This means they do not complete the assessment tasks, they're not receiving a grade and they're not transitioning to the next stages of a degree program. And the subjects can vary across disciplines over the three years.
Are there any other consequences as a result of not being an enrolled student in terms of access to services or things like that?
Sure, absolutely. The access to services at the university usually need to be negotiated. So that means the online learning system, the library borrowing rights and those kinds of things have been negotiated over time. However, the students don't access our government-funded disability services at the university because they're not enrolled.
Does the program have any particular focus or any aspect that deals with pathways or transitions to future education or future inclusion?
Not at this stage. We do recognise this as one of our limitations and areas for growth. We are connected in with the University Specialist Employment Partnership Program, which is available to Flinders University students who have a disability. And that service aims to connect the students or graduates to employment and support that towards the end of their degree. So the University Specialist Employment Partnership Consultant is on campus and meets with Up the Hill Project participants if the participant would like to engage with that. It's not compulsory and it's really up to the individual if they're interested in exploring career pathways once they finish Up the Hill Project.
So in terms of what happens when a participant completes the program, what does that look like at the end of the program? What do they receive? What do they have to do?
So they do participate in a university graduation ceremony, a formal ceremony with the gown and cross the stage and receive a certificate of completion after those three years. So there's another example of inclusion in a university event. However, once again, that's not a qualification because they haven't been enrolled, they haven't been completing assessments towards the credit, towards the degree. What we do know from our research is that the participants achieve a lot of social, emotional outcomes with their self-confidence and independence and great examples of improving their independence over time. But again, it's not a qualification which can then lead on to employment.
Let me ask you some more questions about the ongoing review or evaluation of the program.
Ongoing what, sorry?
Ongoing review. Is the program subject of ongoing evaluation?
Yeah, absolutely. So there have been a number of research projects over the past few years. And I'd like to acknowledge the co-researchers who contribute to those projects and they are graduates of the Up the Hill Project who work in partnership with me on developing those projects and helping with the data collection, the interviewing, the analysis of the data and also the dissemination of the findings and the recommendations. So this isn't just my work on my own, I'd like to acknowledge that. And as I said, there've been a number of projects. Which one would you like me to start with or do you want me to talk about all of them?
Well, I suppose in terms of the process of review, you talk to participants, you conduct surveys?
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
And what else do you do to gather feedback on the program?
Sure. So we also have an advisory group and that's made up of various stakeholders. So first and foremost, people with intellectual disability, current students, graduates and also family members and teaching staff are the stakeholders within the university. The role of the advisory group is to advise the program for continuous improvement and to really support that development in terms of what's working well and what could be done differently. They base that on the self-reports of the participants as well as feedback from the project officer and family members and other people who've had the experience of going through the program. So that's the advisory group, which informs those reviews.
There was some specific research project you only took, you referred to a paragraph thirty-two of your statement.
Mm hmm.
What was involved in that research project? What was its objective and then secondly, what did it demonstrate?
Yeah, great. So this is one of the first reject research projects which investigated the expectations and experiences of the Up the Hill Project participants and also their learning partners. So we talked to the learning partners as well. And the results of that project actually showed that participants increased their self-determination. So the growth in confidence, one example is of being able to give a presentation at the end of the semester. And also found that the Up the Hill Project helped some students to identify future aspirations and goals in terms of perhaps career aspirations. And one really great example which came about from our research was an opportunity where one student was able to do a placement, a work placement as part of the Up the Hill Project in her final semester. The topic she chose to do was a placement at a school. And that there actually meant her lifelong dream of wanting to be a teacher's assistant. So she appreciated the opportunity to have that experience and it's evidence of working towards future aspirations and goals.
And has the program itself been the subject of any qualitative study? And here I'm looking at paragraph what I want to ask you about is the qualitative study that you referred to, paragraph thirty-four. Can you tell the commission that what this study was and what it's finding revealed to you?
Sure. So once again, acknowledging the collaboration with an honours student on this project. The aim of this project was to explore what the graduates of the Up the Hill Project do when they complete the program. So we invited all graduates, which at the time of the study was around about thirty. And we had six who participated in the research, so a small group. However, what we found was that some had continued their education so had gone down the pathway of entering into a foundation studies at Flinders Uni which then leads on to entering into a bachelor. Or some continued to audit outside of the Up the Hill Project. So they had completed their three years and then they wanted to still continue exploring other subjects at the university and appreciated still being connected to that university with their sense of belonging. Another thing we found was increase in social network. So this speaks to the social, emotional outcomes by very nature of being part of a university environment. And what we found was that many of the graduates had remained in contact with their mentors or learning partners and they had remained in contact with university staff. However, what was recognised was that graduates were not keeping in touch with other peers. So they may have met some people in a class, they may have made a friend while they were doing a particular subject for one semester, but they didn't keep in touch. So none of those friendships were maintained over time. Their main connections were with their previous learning partners or university staff. I'll just speak to one more example. With the connections with university staff, we found that a few graduates actually were invited back to participate in various opportunities. So one came back to the university to do some guest lecturing and to speak about their experiences. One was invited to write a book chapter, another wrote an actual book and published that. And one who graduated quite some time ago was invited to produce a film as well. And that was after graduating. So once again, the teaching staff member there recognized what the person with intellectual disability was capable of, noticed her interests and invited her back to that opportunity to produce that.
So based on this research that you've been talking about, do you consider that the program is enhancing inclusion for people with disabilities in university?
Yes, it is, but it's not enough because, as you heard, there's fourteen participants and the university's a very big institute. So the opportunity to have an impact is quite minimal across various disciplines and across various parts of the university. We might be speaking about one particular subject, one particular teaching staff member in one particular college or department of the uni. And it more needs to be done in order to, for more people to acknowledge that people with an intellectual disability or cognitive disability can be included in those university settings.
So in terms of a broader outlook, you refer in your statement, paragraph thirty-seven, to some research undertaken this year with the Centre for Disability Studies. Can I ask you to tell the commission about that research?
Yeah, absolutely. So firstly, just to acknowledge that's a national disability research partnership project where we collaborated with the University of Sydney, my colleagues Professor Mariana Donovan and Dr Nikki Wedgwood. And the aim of our research project was about evaluating both programs so that we could produce a national perspective. So it wasn't just about one state, it was about both programs. We conducted a literature review of international literature. We reviewed participant demographics over the life of both programs. So who has been joining the program, who has not been joining the program in terms of age range, geographical location, which topics or subjects they've been interested in, how many have graduated, how many withdrew, et cetera. We also undertook interviews with graduates of both of the programs. And as part of that project, as I said before, we employed two co-researchers who were graduates, one graduate from the Up the Hill Project and one graduate from the UniToBeyond program. And they participated in all the elements of the research, which also led on to our next stage in that project, which was to consult with an expert advisory committee. That expert advisory committee included eight to ten people at each meeting and eight to ten people with intellectual disability. So they explored our results, they provided further insight into those results. They discussed the findings and helped with the production of easy English summaries of our research. We also, as part of that project, conducted two national roundtables with interested stakeholders from all over Australia. So we invited other representatives from other universities, representatives from universities Australia. And we've established a community of practice moving forward.
And why was it important, proceeded to be important that this project be undertaken? What was the purpose of it?
Yeah, so for a long time, we've been saying and the evidence has been telling us that more needs to be done and that more universities should be doing this. And we needed to question why are more universities not doing this? And we needed to scope the interest nationally in terms of could this be feasible across the country? What would be needed in order for more people with intellectual disability to access universities across the whole country? Not just Flinders Uni and Sydney Uni. Um and so we put this together um to inform um. Policy and inform government and universities in terms of what our findings suggest. And the recommendations that we've developed into a position paper with all of our collaborators.
Now, uh I understand that that position paper hasn't yet been published.
Not quite.
Um but are you able to tell the commission uh in in broad terms about what those recommendations?
Absolutely, yeah. So we have divided our um recommendations into um. Recommendations for Australian governments, so federal, state and territory. And I'm just gonna refer to a couple of notes here from that position paper. Um some of the main points are around enhancing policy. Uh and having a national approach to supporting students with intellectual disability. Um also suggesting um that primary and secondary schools become involved. With recognizing university as a pathway for students with cognitive disability. We've recommended that more funding is needed needed, um more university pathways are required. Um and offering transition planning and also developing partnerships with the private sector organisations. So these are some of those recommendations for governments, um state, territory and federal. And then we recommend for Australian universities to um foster institutional and cultural change. So this means that inclusion of students with disabilities should be part of their core business. It should be the norm and not the exception for all universities. Um and all students need to be supported appropriately to achieve their educational outcomes. Uh universities need to offer more choice and flexibility in terms of the support. And uh foster greater awareness and um invest in things like staff training. Uh to promote that cultural change across the whole institute.
In in terms of the Up the Hill program at the moment, um it's a requirement that eligible a person be an N D I S participant.
Mm-hmm.
Um a person, the participant accesses their own individual N D I S funding to participate in the program, is that right?
That's right, it's part of their N D I S plan, yep.
And aside from that, what are the, are there any other additional costs to a part- a partic- a participant, I should say?
Oh, so there's this um sort of standard um out-of-pocket expenses such as purchasing textbooks. Or um if the person might require support on campus. Or um support with, like a support worker or um support with transport, then they pay for all of that. Um there used to be an auditing fee, which i- it is no longer um required to audit a topic at university. Um but what we recognize is moving forward that we'd like to see. Uh models where it's not just um funded or resourced from. An individual's N D I S plan. Um so universities need to recognize their responsibility in providing that support. And government needs to provide resources to to be able to fund the additional supports that might be required as well. Aside from a person's individual N D I S plan.
Um if I can ask you about your, um what you have loo- looking to the future of the program.
Mm-hmm.
Um are there plans to introduce uh a pathway to access um curriculum? The full curriculum as an enrolled student as contrasted to just auditing a subject?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, great. So at Flinders Uni, we have um plans in place to establish a diploma. Um and this is um in recognition of one of our biggest findings around how. The Up the Hill Project and auditing for three years does not provide a qualification. Which subsequently may not lead on to further opportunities. So with a diploma, it will be a recognized qualification at university level. Um and i- it will be tailored in terms of um. Having, including a work experience component, um including a portfolio. Um as well as optional topics that the students are interested in across the university. So we are working on establishing a diploma pathway. Um that will not replace the Up the Hill Project, it will be in line with the Up the Hill Project. Because we do recognize that some participants um actually not interested in getting that qualification. Don't necessarily want to do the assignments. Um just really appreciate the sense of belonging and the community feel of being at university. Enjoy the social elements of the Up the Hill Project. So we'll still have a sim- the Up the Hill Project, but also have a diploma for those who are interested. In pursuing further education, um which can then lead on to employment pathways as well. The idea of a diploma is, it could um be built upon as well into a bachelor after that too.
And i- in terms of that new program that you're do- that you're talking about. Will there need to be some um changes or you need to look at entry requirements to to participants to be able to enroll? As full students?
Absolutely. So um we're working with our what's called pathways team at Flinders Uni. To acknowledge um students who may not enter university in the traditional way of a an A T A from school. They may um be entering as a mature age student or they may not have completed high school. Um so we're exploring ways of um flexible pathways to entry requirements. Um we also acknowledge that we need to further build the capacity of the university, um in particular the staff. Um in terms of uh institutional, whole of institution. Um attitudes around um expectations of people with intellectual disability. So um this ranges from our e-learning team, um the I T team. Through to the library staff, the student support services, et cetera, everything. Um even the the staff at the cafes for that matter. Um need to actually recognize that people with an intellectual disability can and should be at university. Rather than going with their, perhaps their lower expectation or their predisposition. That students with intellectual disability shouldn't be here or can't be here or don't belong here. So we're actually recognizing that we need to build capacity in that way. To be able to provide appropriate wraparound supports for the students to succeed.
Um can I ask you a question uh about scalability? Do you think with the program that's run at Flinders University, the Up the Hill program? Do you think it would be possible for that type of program to be replicated in other universities across the country?
Yes, I believe it can be. Um I'd like to acknowledge the the use of the word program as well. I think in terms of a vision for inclusion, um in inclusion at universities. It shouldn't be up to a program specifically to be offering a program per se. It should be up to the university as a whole to be providing that support. And universities and the government really need to explore how that can happen. Um with, as I said before, not relying on the individual's N D I S funding. But to have the supports in place at the university. Um I've had um interest from a range of universities and secondary schools across the country. Who've contacted me to find out more. Um so there is interest. Uh but to my knowledge, none of those have eventuated into um similar programs as Up the Hill or Uni to Beyond. Um I do believe there should be more university opportunities. Um and if there was sort of like a national policy oversight. Um mandating universities to be providing this, then um that would really benefit everyone, including the university.
Um do you have any knowledge about whether universities um are. Generally resistant to admitting people with intellectual disabilities?
Whether universities, sorry, repeat.
Gen- generally resistant to admitting people with intellectual disabilities.
Oh, look, I think, and this is my own personal opinion here, i- I think it's about, as I've said a few times, not recognizing. What people with an intellectual disability are capable of. So it comes back down to the expectations. So as soon as someone who has limited experience or knowledge about intellectual disability. Um is asked or proposed the idea of could they come to university. Their immediate response may be, what do you mean? How? Why? No way. That's not possible. They're too disabled to be able to do that. Um those kinds of perceptions might be at play. So it's about challenging that to break down those system barriers um to show other universities. That they can open up their doors to more students.
If I can, uh in terms of my final question, I can take you back to the evidence you gave at the beginning of of your evidence this morning. About your vision um for access et cetera for people with intellectual disability attending universities. Um what do you think is needed for that vision to be realized?
Well, I've made a few notes as well just to reflect further on what I said at the beginning. Um and I want to emphasize once again that it's not necessarily about there being a program. Because that is not full inclusion. So I think when we're talking about full inclusion. We need to be doing a lot more. Um it's not just about, as I said, a physical excess. Resourcing a new ramp, et cetera. It's really about looking across the entire structure and system of the university. And universities in general, higher education in general, and exploring what actually needs to be done. To make sure that support's individualized so the person can succeed and can have a good experience. Um the government needs to resource all universities, so it's not just two out of the forty-three. Um who are thinking this might be a good idea. It's not just about it being a good idea. It's actually about it being a requirement. Um that's what's needed. Um more work is needed to upskill the staff. Um to promote culture change, so some staff may be concerned about their workloads. Um how will I find time to provide that additional support? Um and so there needs to be change in that area as well where the the that sort of thing is resourced. Um and I think it starts with the government in terms of providing that resource to all universities to make it a requirement. So it becomes the norm, not the exception, as I said before.
Um is there anything further that that you wanted to add to?
I think, I feel like I've said everything I needed to. Um. Yeah, I think it's all good. Thank you.
To to conclude, uh Chair, I'll tender Doctor Alotta's statement and ask that be marked uh thirty-one dash zero zero eight. And also the accompanying curriculum detail be marked as thirty-one dash zero zero eight point one.
Yes, both of those documents can be admitted into evidence with those markings. Uh Doctor B- Balaata, thank you very much for your evidence. And I hope you have had the opportunity to say everything you wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing all of that with us. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chair, I ask that we adjourn until eleven A M?
Yes, all right. We'll now take an adjournment until eleven A M Brisbane time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners will now hear from Kathleen O'Kelly Kennedy and Nakia Payne from the Red Dust Healers. So O'Kelly Kennedy is a Paralympian, having competed for Australia. In the women's wheelchair basketball at the Beijing Paralympics in two thousand and eight. Ms O'Kelly Kennedy was born with a limb deficiency and had an amputation at eighteen months old. She is an advocate and co-founder of the Red Dust Healers, the disability inclusion arm of the Outback Academy Australia Limited. A First Nations-led, not-for-profit organisation. Ms Nakia Payne is a twenty-one-year-old First Nations woman from Catherine and lives with a disability. Ms Payne will share her lived experience and how she came to be involved with the Red Dust Healers. The Red Dust Healers use sport as a mechanism to engage with community communities broadly. To challenge community attitudes and assumptions held about First Nations people with disability.
Mr Arago, just before you go further, let me welcome both of you to the Royal Commission and thank you very much for coming to give evidence. Thank you, uh Ms O'Kelly Kennedy, for the statement that you have provided to the Royal Commission, which we have and each of us has read. We very much appreciate your willingness to give evidence today. So thank you very much. If you, in due course, Mr Arago will get round to asking you some questions. And if you'd be good enough to pay attention to her questions, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chair. Uh Chair, both Ms O'Kelly Kennedy and Ms Payne have already um.
Yes, thank you.
Done their ohs and affirmations. Can I start with you, Ms O'Kelly Kennedy? You're a Paralympian who's competed at the Beijing Olympics. And was the first of two Australian women to receive a wheelchair basketball scholarship to the University of Illinois. And you also played professionally professionally in Europe in the men's Euroleague where you won a bronze medal.
Yes.
Uh what are you currently training for?
I'm currently training in spring kayaking and I hope to go to the twenty twenty-four Paris Games for that as well.
And Nakia, uh you're a First Nations woman and you're connections through Kakadu and Ainamland?
Yes.
And you're also a keen sports person. What sports have you been involved in?
Um pretty much all the sports, um but at the moment I'm mainly focusing on badminton.
Badminton?
Yes.
And uh you're also studying a Bachelor of Laws at the moment.
Yeah.
What led you to study law?
Um it was when my brother passed away back in twenty twenty. He was in a caravan accident just outside of Catherine. Um and the way his matter went through the court, the Supreme Court in Darwin. It um triggered me um to become practice law. Um just to get justice for him and any other family that went through what my family went through. And I didn't want um any other family or anyone to go through what my family went through. That was mainly my drive.
Thank you for sharing that. Um. Ms O'Kelly Kennedy, I just wanna start with the the Red Dust Healers. And um I'll I'll lead in a little bit of an intro before I ask you a question. Um you're one of the co-founders of the Red Dust Healers. Which is, as I mentioned earlier, is that disability arm of the Outback Academy Australia. And uh from your statement, you talk about having an important mentor that um took you into community. And uh through the Outback Academy in twenty thirteen. And um you were approached by First Nations members of the community. And what did they ask? What what couldn't they see represented?
So uh I was invited along with a couple of uh wheelchair basketball teammates, who also would be co-founders. Uh Brad Ness and Ryan Morich, uh to present to a group of young people. Uh who would, in a pre-employment program. And we just shared our stories and Brad showed some footage of wheelchair basketball at the Beijing Paralympic Games. They watched that, got a bit excited because it was, you know, Australia went on to win gold and that was very exciting. Uh and at the end they had two questions. One was, um when do we get to try it? They all wanted to get in and crash into each other and have some fun. And the next one was, where are the black ballots? And that was a very good question, uh very confronting question. Um and it led to some really wonderful conversations in that community around what we can do to to make sure that. Uh well, to work towards a more um inclusive future uh at that level. Um the and visibility of of First Nations people with disabilities, uh you know, at a Paralympic level. But also at grassroots as well in sports and recreation.
And was that particular community, without without naming the community, was it a a remote or very remote community?
Regional community, yeah.
You went with Uncle Sid.
Yes.
Let me tell you about Uncle Sid. He wore number five for Carlton. And he played for Carlton in the nineteen seventy and seventy-two premierships that they won.
Yes.
The nineteen seventy premiership, where I was present in the front row of the outer. Was regarded as one of the best grand finals ever in the A F L. And in nineteen seventy-two, the score was twenty-eight nine uh to twenty-two eighteen, the highest scoring A F L grand final ever. And Uncle. And Uncle Sid played exceptionally well, so I remember Uncle Sid very well.
Yeah, he um I've known him my entire life. And uh he has played a huge part in in me seeing myself as a sports person too, just hearing about his struggles.
I should make it absolutely clear that I didn't support Carlton.
Um he also is very good in a wheelchair. And um whenever we do community events and he's there, he'll jump in a wheelchair and race and he still beats everyone as well. Um very simply because he said, well, I just had to get down there before anyone else, so it was pretty easy. Um so he's still a sports person to this day. Yep.
Uncle Sid is actually my uncle. Um Chair, his mum's from Leonora. So I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna compete with him. I just needed to say that since you were referring to him as Uncle Sid.
He is going to love this story later.
Thank you. Thank, I bless you.
Um now, the Red Dust Healers use sport to provide disability awareness and education to increase inclusion for First Nations people. Why is visibility important for First Nations communities in particular? And why um is disability awareness important in for those communities as well?
Oh, this is for me. Yes. You were looking directly at me. Um so from what I've what I've noticed or observed as um someone who isn't a First Nations, um the there is depending, disability is, as we know, as diverse as we all are um in the experience with it, but also moving across um First Nations um communities. They're also just as diverse in how they look at disability or experience disability. Um so it's um depending on where we are, there's very different appro- approaches. Um but visibility is definitely something that we've noticed. Um a common theme can be the theme of shame um around um carrying uh identifying as someone with a disability. Um if you have a visible disability, um it's often something that's covered up and um you you do your best to sort of uh appear as though you don't have a disability. Um so then then you're not looking at the opportunities that could be there for you as someone with a disability as well, um whether it be in sport, um but also what supports are there for you as a person with a disability um in in terms of um education, employment and and so on, and signing up to the N D I S as well. So uh seeing the Red Dust Healers in community, us being First First Nations and other people with disabilities, um men, men and women, um young and old, all people from all different backgrounds and experiences, all getting along together and presenting um united, but also united in our um in our pride of being people with disabilities as well. And um not that we don't have struggles and we make sure we share that too because it's not all like, hey, this is great. Like, it's important to say, yeah, sometimes it sucks. But um being able to see us presented in that way is quite powerful and has led to some people who haven't previously identified as having a disability saying, actually, I I do have a disability and and I think I'm I'm interested in learning more about what that means for me and where I can go with this, the opportunities that can actually arise um from that. Hope that made sense.
And Ms. Payne, how how does that resonate with with you from your experience uh learning about Red Dust Healers uh through Kathleen reaching out to your dad? And um what it's meant to you to be a part of the Red Dust Healers?
Um it made me more confident as a person, um especially a First Nations person. Um especially in Catherine because I'm the only one um that has a prosthetic leg um and identifies as having a disability. It's made me more confident as a person going outside my community um and embracing that, yeah, I do have a disability and there's no shame in that. So um and it helps with um Indigenous people in remote communities that do have disabilities, that it's not shame to have a disability and if anything, like you should be proud of it. So.
Thank you. And um Ms. Payne, can I start with you? How do you use sport to connect with um people through the Red Dust Healers?
Um. It's co- it's well, with sport, I feel like I'm in my element that um there's no shame in it that you're going against able-bodied people, so people that do have two arms and two legs. Um that the track is still the same, the pool is still the same, the time is still the same. Like, you're just showing that, I guess you're better than them with the disability. Um um but that's that's my attitude to it, so.
So giving you that confidence?
Yeah, so.
And Ms. O'Kelly Kennedy, uh in that elite um high level of, you know, representing Australia in the Paralympics, and without naming any organisations, has that um space been a safe space to um develop um your career in in sport?
Uh for, okay, so for me personally, uh not not as a a teenage girl, definitely not. It wasn't a safe space. Um I hope that it's a little bit different now because that was, I don't wanna reveal too much, but that was a little while ago. Um but I I I had some experiences I should have never had um in terms of uh uh sexual harassment um and abuse. Um I think sometimes with people with people with dis- disability sports, we assume that everyone's well-intended, in particular the people with disabilities. But most of those people that behaved badly were men with disabilities. So it's important to, uh from my experience, it wasn't a safe place in that uh at that stage for me um and into my twenties. Um but I'm really, that's something I'm very passionate about now and making sure with what we do with the healers, where it's a safe space for women um eh as well, which was why when we had the, we did a- attempt to fund having teams in the wheelchair basketball league, it was important for us to have a women's team as well, uh because it wasn't a safe pathway, we thought, for women starting out to just only have the option of playing more basketball on a predominantly male team. Um so we are addressing that, but yeah, it wasn't a safe space for me unfortunately. Um but I I definitely plan on um changing that.
Now, going back to the composition of of the healers, who who is involved in the healers?
Any, you guys could all be healers if you wanted to be. A a red, it's a very simple con- concept really. A red dust heel is someone who's committed to the inclusion of people with disabilities in all areas of life, building healing friendships and a connected community. So we have a strong focus on First Nations engagement, involvement, and raising the voices of First Nations people with disabilities. Uh but we do everything where e- everything we do, everyone is welcome. Um provided they are safe and respectful. Uh and so truly, if you believe in what I just said, you're a dust healer as well and that's the, it's a movement. Um Uncle Daryl Kickit over in W U A who's attached to us as well, he's one of our, he calls himself our backup elder. Um he advises us, he and he and Uncle Sid wanna get shirts that say that on the back when they travel with us. Um so uh he sees us as it's it's a movement where we're trying to create that tipping point, uh get people um get people talking, thinking um outside of everything, anything they ever thought was possible before, um and feeling more and more connected. Um we've got healers all over the country. Uh but they know that if they if they need anything, that that we're we're there for each other. Uh and that's a really special uh thing, especially over a period of time where we couldn't actually connect that well, we still found ways. So we had a a a forum of First Nation women's with dis- First Nations women with disabilities uh who have participated in sport to online from all over the country, which Nakia participated in, where they were able to share their experiences and get some more. We just get some more research done there and and stories. Um it's so important to to get these stories and uh still keep people connected even during a time where it was hard. It would have been great to bring them together. But yeah, we find ways.
And the Red Dust Healers are voluntary participants?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Payne, um you first became involved with the Red Dust Healers in twenty seventeen when uh you're in year twelve. And that was because Miss O'Kelly Kennedy had reached out to your dad. Um had you ever heard about the Red Dust Healers before that?
Um no, I've never heard of the Red Dust Healers. Um Kath reached out to Dad um when I was in year twelve because I just had a surgery on my prosthetic leg and I was in a wheelchair and I um went through depression because I was limited to walk around and I had to be forced into a wheelchair. I did not want to be forced into it. Um and then Dad was like, oh, just reach out to Kath. Um and that's when I started getting involved with them to do wheelchair basketball. So it's another sport that I'm also doing as well, so.
And has it been important to have those mentors, whether they be First Nations or not, or people with or without disability?
Yeah, um and lots of them were Paralympians and ex-Paralympians and um First Nations and non-First Nations, so it was, you know, very diverse, so.
So creating that sense of community amongst you all?
Yeah.
And uh Ms. Payne, you had some experiences when you were at school that were difficult. And um as a result, you moved um to boarding school. Um how did you find that, coming from a more remote community, going to a major city away from home?
I found it really challenging, especially that because I'm one of seven or eight. I sit at number one um siblings. Um I was at high school for one term, year seven, and I got bullied out. So and I didn't wanna leave, but my parents were like, you should go to boarding school. I didn't want to go, but I ended up going and it's the best thing that I ever did. So I was going to boarding school down in Adelaide.
Yeah. And uh was it important to you as the eldest of your siblings to take on those challenges even though they might be difficult?
Yeah, it was. Um I had the mindset of if my siblings were gonna look up to someone, it would be me and I would be their hero. And if they were chasing anyone, it would be me, especially on my achievements. Um they weren't chasing anyone else, it would be me. So I had that mindset all the way through school and still today, so.
And now with your studies as well?
Yeah.
When you were at school and you you wanted to compete uh in swimming and you came across some challenges in being able to do that at a more elite level, could you share with the commissioners that experience?
Um so because I live in Catherine, so that's like three hundred plus kilometres away from Darwin. Um and Darwin at the time had the facilities and the tr- coaches to train me. Um and if I were able to com- like compete in competitions or be noticed, I had to drive three hundred kilometres or fly to interstate to either win a medal or be put on a pedestal to be noticed. Um and that was just too much for my family, especially that because I'm one of, you know, seven siblings. My parents can't just drop all their things just for one child. Um it was way too hard for them.
And is that a particularly difficult thing that you have seen within First Nations communities, particularly remote communities, um where uh families aren't able to access support to get people like yourself to those competitive events?
Yeah, it's just way too hard. Like, you can't, you've gotta travel and then you've gotta find accommodation. Then you've gotta worry about the children or the family that you have at home. It's just way too much. So you just end up not doing it at all.
And Ms. O'Kelly Kennedy, you have seen that happen in previous occasions with some of the healers that you've tried to support. Um could you talk to that particular experience of where you stepped in at the last minute um to support that family and the attitudes of, um without naming anyone, the attitudes that uh that family and you might have encountered during that experience?
Yes, um so, sorry, I'm just gathering my thoughts. The the young girl and her mother um needed to, as part of um the requirements for them to participate in a camp for this sport, they needed to be filling out a uh COVID check-in every day, leading into it for two weeks, I think it was, on on an app. Um they struggled with this. Uh the message was from that group that um was that if they weren't, if they didn't do that, they wouldn't be able to come to the camp. Um what was great was that when, because they they didn't actually um fill out that every day, they were under the assumption therefore they weren't going. What was great was someone within that organisation did find a way for them to still be able to go, which was fantastic. Um unfortunately, that message didn't get to get to them until the morning of the day they were meant to be flying, uh which was when they called me um quite uh upset uh because they weren't gonna be ready in time for that flight. So all it came down to was someone a little higher up than the person that had done a very good job to to get, make things possible for them to still attend this uh camp. Uh needed to just okay Outback Academy, covering the difference so that they could go on a later flight and then I was going to drive them to the airport. So there was no no issue there. Unfortunately, that person higher up um vetoed that because they had done enough. And um it wouldn't be fair on the other athletes if they showed preferential treatment to that degree, I guess. That was the the message that came back. Um what was terribly sad for this mother and daughter was um the the mother had done her very best and she she then felt like she let down her daughter. Her daughter had been quite isolated due to COVID, so hadn't been able to particip- participate in many things at all and was finally able to go to a camp and and interact with peers with similar experiences, including another First Nations athlete with a disability. But unfortunately, because that one person decided they'd done enough, they ticked the box. Um they didn't attend that, well, this, have I said a name in all of this? Oh, good. So I'm trying so hard. Um this young girl wasn't able to have that experience. And it was very hard to explain the difference between equality and equity in this situation. Uh and it was frustrating because if we had more say and I guess power as advocates for people like this, we might have been able to push something. But unfortunately, at this point, we don't and we, it was very sad to say, look, there's nothing more I I can do. Um uh and yeah, that was a very, that still makes me very sad. It was very unnecessary um to to block that considering we were fixing it. There was there was a solution for her to still be involved.
And i- in terms of those attitudes and not understanding the equity and equality, um from your experience as the co-founder of Red Dust Healers, have has it been your experience that First Nations communities have um um it will need that culturally safe space to be able to uh engage in those programs? And that's something that Red Dust Healers uh is dedicated towards, working towards that cultural safety.
Yes, I it I believe there will need, there does need to be spaces where I shouldn't be present in them. Um it should only be First Nations people with disabilities participating and I know that that's that's something that we we wanna work towards as well, where we're developing leaders in that space already. Oh, there's one sitting right next to me. He's phenomenal. Um there there there's voices everywhere that just need to be heard. Um and uh we do wanna provide that space where um they can feel completely comfortable and safe in in chatting about all the different things that uh uh including that extra cultural barrier or that that's there that I, as someone, a non-Indigenous person with a disability, would never under- could never understand. Um so that's something we're working towards as well. We'd love to do camps uh where lots of sports could be tried, there isn't a barrier of access or anything like that. We have our backup elders there, but that's where it's a space um where all these discussions that need to be had can be had in a very safe environment led by First Nations people.
Thank you. Now, Miss Payne, I wanna talk about one of those um opportunities that you had to go. Um representing the Red Dust Healers and that was to broom. And can you tell me a little bit about what that involved? What what sort of things were you doing there as as a healer?
Um we were visiting all the schools um that had able-bodied kids and some that had um disabilities. Um getting them in the wheelchairs. I think we did a little bit of goalball. Um blindfooty, I think. Um that was so cool. Um but it was mainly just getting the kids in the wheelchairs. Um get having, letting them have the experience of what it's like for someone that is unable to use their legs. Um so.
And storytelling is a big part of um the experience as well?
Yeah, I told a lot of um my story, um how I lost my leg um when I was four years old. To a lawnmower accident just outside um on our block in Catherine, so.
And um for those young people who you might have been speaking to. How did you see that impact them sharing those those stories?
Um it made me feel more confident, um especially just reminding myself um. When I dropped one of my siblings off to preschool one time, um it would have been my late brother that I lost two years ago, Brett Stin. Um his friends, like, cause they're just little kids, so they don't know any different, that um. They were asking me like, oh, what happened to my leg? And um Brett Stin kinda, you know, backed them up. I was like. There's nothing wrong with her. She's just like everyone else. Um so it made me more confident to um. I guess walk around without a cover on my leg and just show that I'm just like everyone else. Um. I don't have a disability despite what everyone else is.
And um how important is it for, in particular remote and very remote communities? To have access to the red dust healers?
Um it's extremely important cause like, so before I'm the only one in my hometown. There's a lot more um people that have disabilities that are further remote than Catherine. Like especially the other remote communities that only have like five hundred people. Um and they have no access to phone service, hospitals and nothing and they've gotta travel like. Eight plus hours just to get to Catherine.
And Miss O'Kelly Kennedy, was there anything else in relation to that broom trip that you wanted to share with the commissioners?
Yeah, we'll we'll be going back to, so the way we do things, it's a co-design with the community. There, so we were working with Kimberley Aboriginal, oh crap. We're working with camps. Um but so the first time round, it was basically what you need from us, like where 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 would we be best. To go, who would, who's best for us to talk to, what what can it look like that's gonna ha- serve the greatest good for the greatest number while we're there? And um the first time around, it was really, it the focus was awareness raising. And that's what we did and part of that was actually one of the people working from uh working with camps. Um as a result of the aw- awareness raising activities and being around us, um started uh. Identifying as someone with a disability and part of the disability community is now. Uh exploring more of that and and uh advocating for himself. He's now on the N D I S. So like it's. Awesome thing because he's based there and us, our presence has helped to empower him to. To continue the work once we leave, which is great. This next time around though, uh from what. Uh leading on from what Kaia was saying, I I mentioned that we could talk a lot about. The different ways in which you can use the N D I S, one of which is getting supports to actually attend. Different sporting activities that might be going on, uh where some someone pointed out, uh well. That would be great, but we don't have enough support workers to actually encourage that for people. So. Now, one of the focuses when we're back will be aw- awareness raising around that being a great. Uh job opportunity for people um and talking about that with young people and or school leavers and. And people in the community is that being uh another um avenue for employment as well and what that looks like. And so, yeah, it's it's changing every time we go back and it's really, it's community-led always.
I just wanna sit on that and unpack it a little bit and um. Uh the red dust heel is invited or do you just turn up in a community?
We're invited. Uh it's all word of mouth usually. We heard about you. Is there any way you can come? Unfortunately, sometimes when people say, we heard about you, is there any way you can come? We. We can't without funding, so it was fortunate that they were able to find the funding for us to attend. Uh but. We haven't, we've never said no, we've just said we'll we'll leave it with us and we'll find a way. Uh but it can take some some time uh in that case to 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 actually get to a place. Uh or get someone to us. So there was a young man in uh Mullen Community uh who uh. Acquired his disability um at around three, um where he's he's missing parts of his limbs and. He was starting to be a little ostracized by the other young men there. And his support person reached out um asking if there's anything we can do. It was. A bit hard for us to get to him at that stage, we'd only really just started out. But we had an event that we were participating in over in W A, so we told them if we're gonna work with you. You need to fly this young man down with his support so he can be a part of it as well, which they did and that was the first time we met him. And we've stayed connected with him since. You know who I'm talking about. Um but uh sometimes it is about trying to bring someone out to something that's that's going on and he. It was quite funny cause it was the first time he'd been around people with disabilities. Uh like him, so and he really was initially like, why am I with these people? Like, what is going on? Um but as he warmed up, uh. We noticed that again, like he used to wear gloves or always have his hands in his pockets and he started not doing that. Um and he started thinking about the different sports he could do and he started doing athletics. Where his support person, when they went back home, used uh flour, like baking flour, to make the lines in the red dust. Which didn't last very long, but like to to replicate uh the tracks that he can train, so. I just love that story. But um sometimes it does mean that we need to get someone to us if it's that remote initially, but ideally we'd love to go. Everywhere.
And in in terms of the Red Dust Healers and and that co-design and community-led. Without naming any organisations, have you seen that um set up? In other organisations? Is there, are there others that do what Red Dust Healers do?
No, is the short answer. Uh there are some that, though, that uh ask for our assistance. Um with that, which and we support those organisations often, though we are the ones doing the majority of the work. Um. I think uh it would be great to see more interest. In in understanding that uh there there's a little bit of an attitude while we we treat everyone the same. So we don't need. This that can come from some organisations, um but. Also that this might be someone else's job, not ours. Um but really, the only other group that's doing anything needs us. And it's voluntary. So uh at the moment, it's not terribly sustainable. It's just. Driven by passion and um we're not gonna stop, but it would be really great for people to come to the party a little bit more.
Um now, Miss Payne, what is your vision for an inclusive Australia?
Um we're all treated the same, like despite having a disability, your colour, race, whatever. All the same.
And what legacy do you wanna leave, you know, at least for your siblings?
Um treat everyone the way you would like to be treated. If you wanna get yelled at, expect it to be get yelled at. Um just treat everyone kindly, like well the same. Like we all have jobs. We all wake up, we all go to bed, like it's not na- it's not hard to be kind.
And your dream one day is to become a judge?
Yes.
And Miss O'Kelly Kennedy, what do you see as your vision for an inclusive Australia?
I wanna see more people feeling like they belong. It it sort of comes back to that word a lot with the healers as well, how powerful it is to feel like you belong. Um and realising as we travel around that so many people don't have that sense of belonging to anything or anyone. And even just that little bit of belonging to us makes a huge difference. Uh to feel, for more people to feel valued for who they are. And yeah, I just, it's that word, it's belonging, yeah. We all need to belong. Thank you both.
Yes, thank you both very much, both for coming here and for the work that you've done. We all wish you well in continuation of that work, which is very important and I'm sure Commissioner Mason in particular. Would endorse that comment. And Miss Payne, your aspirations are spot on. And we wish you every success in your legal studies. And to become a lawyer and in due course to become a judge. The law is some, is a discipline. That can enhance social justice. Doesn't always work that way, but it can. And it can be a very important force and I'm pretty sure that when you become a lawyer, you'll be a force for social justice.
May I ask you what university you're going to?
I'm Charles Darwin.
Fantastic, thank you.
Do they use Sackville and Nebe on property law?
I'm doing that next um year, property law.
And Chair, if I could tend to the signed statement of Miss Kathleen O'Kelly Kennedy, dated the thirtieth of November twenty twenty two. And um I said it'd be marked exhibit thirty one point zero zero nine.
Yes, that can be done. That statement will be admitted into evidence and given that marking. Thank you very much. Do we now take a uh a short adjournment?
Yes, Chair, ten minute break.
All right, it's uh, let's uh do this. It's uh just after eleven forty five. Let's resume at twelve noon.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, we will now hear from Miss Sherry Beaver of the Rainbow Project. I can indicate that Miss Beaver and her interpreters have all been given affirmations this morning.
Thank you. Um thank you very much, Miss Beaver, for uh coming to the Royal Commission today to give evidence. We are very grateful to you for doing that. We are also very grateful for your written statement. Each of us has that written statement and we have read it, so thank you very much for that. And I will now ask uh Miss Fraser to ask you some questions. Thank you.
Miss Beaver, your full name is Sherry Beaver?
Yes.
And you have sworn a statement for this Royal Commission?
Yes, that's correct.
And that statement was dated one December two thousand and twenty two?
Yes.
And do you confirm that that statement is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
That's correct.
Miss Beaver, you swore that statement on behalf of Expression Australia, is that correct?
That's right.
Miss Beaver, can you tell the Royal Commissioner a little bit about the history of Expression Australia?
Yes, I certainly can. Expression Australia was established back in eighteen eighty four. An organisation established by deaf people for deaf people. And since its inception, it's provided a hundred and forty years of service to the deaf and hard of hearing communities that exist in Victoria. Expression Australia has gone through a number of name changes and more recently became Expression Australia in twenty eighteen. The organisation also merged with the Tasmanian Deaf Society in twenty sixteen. Which means we now provide services to deaf people not only in Victoria but also Tasmania. We provide a suite of services, Ausland interpreting, Ausland tuition, support work. Support coordination, N D I S services, accommodation services, translation. And community engagement, to name a few.
And Miss Beaver, before your recent promotion within Expression Australia. You were the project lead of the Deaf Queer Rainbow Project, which is a project, as I understand it, of Expression Australia.
Yes, that's right.
And when did the project start?
The project started in twenty twenty. And received a grant in twenty nineteen. An information linkages capacity building grant known as I L C. But prior to that, just to give you a bit of history as to how the project started. The Australian Deaf Gay and Lesbian Association, known as A D G L A, has a long history in this country. And at one point folded because unfortunately they didn't have a lot of volunteers available to support them and there were unexpended. Funds that still existed at the time. And so they approached Vic Dev. Which was formerly Expression Australia, seeking support for the queer deaf community in Victoria. And wanting to utilise those funds. So they established a research project. And employed two research officers, one was deaf and one could hear. And it was to engage with the deaf queer community in Victoria. And ask questions around what they were seeking in terms of support. What their needs were and how they could be better supported as a cohort. The research project uh went over one year in twenty seventeen. And the findings from that report were produced. And we utilised for the application of the current funds that were received for the Rainbow Project. So the Rainbow Project. As we have just discussed, uh started in twenty twenty and has now been extended out to twenty twenty four.
So am I to understand that the project was co-designed with people with disabilities?
Yes, so the project uh has been co-designed through an advisory group. There's a number of deaf community members who are involved in the project and we were wanting to ensure that it was purpose fit. To be appropriate for their linguistic and cultural needs. And also ensuring we had queer deaf people with lived experience who could contribute. And acknowledging the intersectionality that exists not only within our organisation but also the community. And this is to increase the organisation's capacity to be able to support queer deaf people through this project. And increasing community understanding about the needs of deaf queer people. And to establish partnerships with various rainbow organisations to increase their capacity to provide services and support. To deaf queer people in Victoria and Tasmania.
And you would say that it was essential that the project was co-designed?
Yes, absolutely. Because a project like this can't exist without having. Deaf queer community members' involvement. With the advisory group, they provided advice and support to ensure that the project was sustainable. And maintained our set goals. We had a tailored requirement of needs, but also ensuring that the organisation could work in. And collaborate with the queer community to fully acknowledge their requirements. And their understanding because they are the subject matter experts. Expression Australia is not. So it was critical for us as an organisation to maintain our linkages with the deaf queer community. Through our strategic goals and to extend our engagement and broaden our impact.
And on the um topic of impact, what are the specific aims? And on the um topic of impact, what are the specific aims of the Deaf Queer Rainbow Project?
First of all, to develop partnerships with rainbow organisations, like minded organisations in Victoria and Tasmania. Also to increase their understanding and awareness to work with deaf and hard of hearing queer people. Because historically, we have identified this gap where we've had deaf queer people who don't necessarily intersect with the mainstream organisations or the mainstream queer community. So it's important that we have that overlap. Developing resources using Auslan as a first approach. And what I mean by that is, a lot of information is text based, it's based in English. So translating that information into Auslan, deaf people's primary language, and getting deaf queer people to produce that language in Auslan in translations from an English script. And as a result, it means that we're meeting the linguistic needs of deaf queer community members. And the wider community has a knowledge and an understanding of deaf queer people's needs. It's also an opportunity for social engagement and also to enhance deaf queer individuals' mental health and wellbeing through events that are organised where they can socialise and talk amongst their peers. Experience queer performances, meet friends, young and old, but to also have conversations with different experts from various organisations to assist them with understanding their own identity and understanding that intersectionality is a critical part of who you are and being part of a community. Identifying deaf queer people with leadership skills and capacity was another aspect we looked at. So if they're able to produce information at Auslan and then passing that on to other future generations of deaf people who use Auslan.
Ms Beaver, I'd like to unpack um some of the information that you've just shared with us. Am I correct to understand that the specific activities um that the Rainbow Project undertake is um it could be broken down into uh several categories? Access to information, deaf and uh rainbow awareness training, and inclusive recreation and peer support and modelling. And one of the ways in which you undertake the uh inclusive recreation is your collaboration with the Midsummer Festival.
Yes, that's right.
Now, if we come back to um Auslan and access to information, can you tell me what are the risks to a deaf person, um queer or otherwise, if they're not able to access information in Auslan?
Yes, I can give you a number of examples. A lot of information is disseminated in relation to PrEP, which is a known medication for people from the queer community, more specifically gay men, to access. So this medication is provided to decrease a person's chances of contracting HIV. When the medication is taken, experts know that there's a specific timeframe that this medication needs to be taken over six weeks or even more, to enable the body to develop antibodies and a stronger immune system to reduce the chances of that individual contracting HIV. There's a lot of information provided about PrEP in English in the text form, and it's not accessible to deaf queer people. So deaf gay men do not have that understanding or awareness. And therefore it means that their chances of contracting HIV are increased as a result. So we produced eleven Auslan videos that talk about HIV and AIDS and what that means, the potential risks, how to prevent catching HIV and AIDS, and specific videos about PrEP, the medication, in Auslan and what the process includes. Where do you obtain this medication? How long do you need to take it for? Who do you seek out this medication from? So these videos were developed in partnership with a larger organisation in Victoria who focus on community health services for the queer community as a whole and provide support services to gay men with HIV and AIDS. So that written material was provided to us and we needed to ensure that it was accurate to be translated into Auslan to produce various videos. That has a huge impact because from our experience, many deaf people were unaware about the content of that information until we released it in Auslan. And as a result, it means we've reduced the risk of deaf people who are queer to contract HIV or AIDS. So it means that we're able to support the deaf queer community through their health, physically but also their mental health, to ensure that they do feel empowered and they're able to sustain a happy life and know what they need to do to reduce their risk.
So without that access to information in a language that they can understand, deaf queer people um don't feel empowered with respect to their health, for example.
That's right. They're unaware, they don't know that their risks have increased. Putting it plainly, we live in an auditory environment in this world. So deaf people don't have the opportunity to overhear conversations incidentally. If a deaf gay man happens to be travelling on a bus, there may be a group of queer people on that bus talking about PrEP and how they utilise that medication. And this deaf man doesn't have access incidentally to that information. He can't hear it. He's oblivious to the conversations occurring around him, therefore his risks increase. And potentially he could increase the risk to other people in society because of this lack of awareness. So that's why it's important that deaf queer individuals are able to be involved in conversations like this to minimise risk to the broader community. If you think about the COVID information provided in Auslan with the various premieres around the country, deaf people would not have been aware about COVID and the risks had they not had access to Auslan interpreting. So by providing Auslan interpretation every day on the daily updates around COVID and the statistics, it meant that deaf people have realised they need to work with the community to minimise the spread of the virus. And that reduces everybody else's risk as well. So I guess I wanted to emphasise the importance of working together, disseminating information for everyone to understand, to be able to cooperate and receiving that in your primary language being Auslan to minimise the risk, not only to deaf people but also to the right communities that they live in.
If we focus on the queer community specifically, is it the case that there was a gap to some extent in Auslan um in relation to appropriate words and languages, oh words and language, sorry, for the deaf community?
Yes, you could say that. Similar to what I was saying before, the deaf community but society at large, if you think about new terms, deaf people are not privy to those incidental conversations to overhear new terms that are coined. And they're not on par with their hearing peers. So it means deaf people are behind the eight ball in terms of understanding new terms, concepts, lexicon that's used within the queer community such as non-binary, pansexual and intersex. Because in Auslan, we don't have signed equivalents to those English words. And that's why it's critical that organisations such as Expression Australia are able to unpack the meaning of these words to produce them in Auslan to deaf queer members so they understand the concepts. And what's significant also is deaf queer people having access to the language used within their own queer communities for them to be able to explore their own identities, understand themselves, be empowered and live fully fledged lives and be confident about who they are and their own identity. If they're not able to have access to the language to describe these feelings, it makes it more difficult. They face additional barriers. For example, I'll talk a little bit about my own personal experience. As a young teenager, I was struggling at one point in my life around my identity. I didn't know how to explain what I was feeling in Auslan because there were no equivalent concepts in Auslan. This language simply wasn't available in my own language. I sought out deaf queer role models. There weren't many around. There were certainly older deaf people, but the age gap between myself being a sixteen year old and them, of course I didn't want to naturally associate with them. Had I had someone closer to my own age, I could have had those conversations that could have assisted me. So my own growth and development was important in having an older person to look up to, who I could role model and understand the terms that were necessary. And had I had that support, I could have coped much better than what I did. Looking at new terms that do come about in the queer community, Auslan signs aren't created straight away. So if we think about the sign transgender, this was created by a deaf transgender person because they had that lived experience. Signs can't be created by a deaf person who doesn't have the lived experience. And at the moment, there's no Auslan sign for intersex because we simply are not aware of a deaf person who has a lived experience of being intersex. And that's why we have to actually spell that out letter for letter.
You've told us a moment ago about the eleven videos that you've created um in conjunction uh with the uh health organisation in Victoria. Do those eleven video resources sit only within Expression Australia or are they disseminated and shared amongst other health organisations um around Victoria and otherwise?
Well, at the moment they're available on YouTube uh through Expression Australia. And we are working with a queer health organisation to upload that information on their website. It's still a work in progress, but we're certainly keen to see a complete rollout across the country into the generic queer community, but also for deaf queer community members to understand. Because the eleven videos would certainly benefit so many.
Coming back to um some of the recreational activities that the Rainbow Project has been involved um with, how important do you think inclusive recreation is for the deaf uh queer person in developing their sense of identity and inclusion in society?
Inclusive recreation is critical. And for this reason, Expression Australia have recently started collaborating with the Midsummer organisers in order to create a completely inclusive festival experience for deaf and hard of hearing people for the first time.
Can I stop you there? Can I ask you to um explain to the commission what the Midsummer Festival is?
Yes, of course. The Midsummer Festival is a month-long festival celebrating queer community members in Victoria, similar to Mardi Gras in Sydney. However, the Midsummer Festival is kind of on a smaller scale. It's much more community focused. There's a number of events, performances that are provided and it's been embedded in Melbourne culture for some time. So over the years, Midsummer has provided Auslan interpreting for specific events throughout the month. But the entire event hasn't been completely inclusive for deaf or hard of hearing people. So in twenty twenty three, for the very first time, we will have a deaf community hub at the Midsummer Festival, which creates a safe space for deaf community members who are queer and who can participate in the daily events and engage with other individuals who may be interested in learning Auslan. And also, it's mutually beneficial for those who wish to learn Auslan and want to learn some queer signs. It means that with Expression Australia's support, these individuals are able to interact. They'll provide Auslan interpreting for the deaf queer community members who wish to go and engage with a business stall holder. And the interpreter can assist them in that process to fully engage in those types of conversations. So it means that these deaf and hard of hearing individuals will in fact have the complete Midsummer experience, not only at the festival but also the Pride March as well. So it's a very exciting time for the deaf and hard of hearing queer community to have complete access through the Midsummer and Pride experiences in twenty twenty three. And we'd like to see more deaf and hard of hearing people feel a strong sense of pride and identity, to feel empowered and confident to be able to be their authentic selves.
Will the uh deaf hub that you've just spoken of be open or available um to experience by people who are not deaf or hard of hearing as well?
Yes, it will be. At the Midsummer Festival, the deaf community hub visually will be a large marquee. And we welcome all people who can hear, who don't necessarily use Auslan, who wish to learn about our community and culture, to learn basic Auslan signs or even just to know that there are deaf queer people that they can interact with. Because we certainly support and love our allies, we require more allies. And if we're wanting to see the world be more inclusive, we need allies to support us to interact in the wider community and specifically the queer community.
The Midsummer Festival and its collaboration with um the Rainbow Project sounds like a great example of um recreational co-design. What do you think other um festivals or similar similar events could learn um from this collaboration?
Well, all festivals could learn from this collaboration, actually. To date, so many festivals have not been wholly accessible for the deaf and hard of hearing community. We're not able to have that complete festival experience, if you like. Back in my day, when I think about the big day out, for example, it was never completely Auslan interpreted. Music festivals didn't provide signing on stage. It's only a recent occurrence. I recall going to my first accessible festival, which we all know as Ability Fest, organised by Dylan Alcott, who gave evidence yesterday. He had a vision of accessibility and the example of inclusion is just incredible. Seeing Auslan interpreters signing performances at a music festival. It's amazing to be able to take part in a festival such as that. But many other festivals, I'd really love to see make more of an effort in creating a space where deaf people can participate. And in my own experience, festival organisers generally consider accessibility requirements as an afterthought. It's not front of mind. And it means that deaf people suffer from advocacy fatigue. They're constantly trying to negotiate their accessibility requirements. And we're often told there's no money in the budget for it. And then deaf people need to pool their resources through the community by using their NDIS funds to contribute to that in order to make the festival inclusive. I'd really love to see more festivals embrace the concept of inclusivity and ensuring that there is access for deaf and hard of hearing people so they can fully participate from start to finish.
Uh Ms Beaver, I would like in a moment to come back to some of the other social and recreational um activities that the Rainbow Project is involved in. But before we move to that, can we step back a little bit in terms of some of the other work that the Rainbow Project does? It's probably more aligned with the work in terms of Auslan. Could you tell me about the work of the uh Deaf Queer Rainbow Project in terms of deaf and queer awareness training?
Yes, I can. Expression Australia's provided Rainbow Awareness Training to all our internal staff for the first time this year. That training included information about the queer community, such as pronouns, and how we acknowledge these in Auslan. Throughout the training, I witnessed the participants engaging with and understanding these topics, which in turn increase their capacity for being better able to support their deaf clients who identify as members of the queer community. Another benefit from this training was that staff who identify as LGBTQ plus themselves now feel more seen and have confidence in their workplace supporting them. Expression Australia now has a huge focus on intersectionality, a concept that is relatively new to the deaf sector. Expression has embedded the concept of intersectionality within their work practices and acknowledge that the deaf community they serve come from diverse backgrounds and identify in a myriad of ways, such as being queer, having other disabilities, being First Nations, having lived experience as a migrant, or being from a call background. Our organisation acknowledges this, looking at the diversity and is fiercely passionate about recognising intersections of identity in our work. So in relation to my previous comments about queer awareness training within the organisation, Expression Australia is currently going through a process in obtaining their Rainbow Tick accreditation. And I can proudly say that we're on track to qualify for that accreditation by mid twenty twenty-three. The training is part of this process. This is an exciting prospect for us, and I believe that we'll be the first deaf organisation in Australia to achieve the Rainbow Tick status.
So just so that I understand, you've done the Rainbow Awareness Training within Expression Australia. But looking at it from the other side, you have done deaf awareness training into queer and rainbow organisations?
Yes, that's right. And thank you for that question. Expression Australia historically has provided deaf awareness training that many of us know as DAT. And through the Rainbow Project, the deaf awareness training has been modified, or tailored if you like, to work with queer organisations in order to provide them with an awareness through two lenses, understanding the deaf perspective through two lenses. So not only the deaf perspective, but also the queer perspective. And also sharing the experiences of those who are queer, but through the lens of a deaf person. As part of that, we talk about the history, the barriers that deaf people have traditionally faced within the queer community. So it's a a great segue for us to be able to partner with these organisations in these examples where we provide deaf awareness training and ensuring that our deaf awareness training is more diverse and inclusive and that we're better able to tailor our programmes to suit organisations' requirements. For example, working with a queer organisation, we might be providing deaf awareness training to a hospital or to mental health professionals. So this way, it means that our programmes recognise their diversity and intersectionalities. We do provide deaf awareness training to, sorry, not deaf queer organisations, but just to clarify, general queer organisations. And we did that as a pilot originally that provided feedback to assist us in making the necessary changes to ensure that our deaf awareness training was appropriate and fit for purpose. And ensuring that we have positive impacts for those organisations and also ourselves. And to continue that ongoing partnership.
And did you mention um a moment ago that the organisers of the Midsummer Festival have undertaken uh deaf awareness training themselves?
Yes, that's correct.
So that is something that you would like to see other event organisers and and people like that who are organising inclusive events to also undertake?
Yes.
Did you see a notable um difference in the approach taken by the Midsummer Festival organisers before and after they undertook that training?
I saw a notable difference in their approach, how they became much more collaborative, and the fact that they were willing to engage more regularly if they had any questions, thoughts, or ideas around inclusive requirements for deaf people. They're all so much more willing to work with us and think about how they could better improve the Midsummer Programme as a result to be more accessible for deaf and hard of hearing queer people.
And what did the um what what did the deaf awareness training that the Midsummer Festival, for example, undertook? What did that actually look like? What, how many sessions were involved? How long did it take?
Well, I must say, we've only provided one session so far. It was a cohort of about twenty people. And the deaf awareness training was about an hour and a half. And it was in an interactive format where people were able to ask questions and interact.
And is that something that within the Rainbow Project you see um continuing to develop or building upon?
Yes, definitely building upon that because our main aim is to ensure that it's a permanent offering. So it means with deaf awareness training sessions, we will be able to make them fee-for-service and the funds raised from this service can go back into the deaf queer community.
And I would imagine that that um deaf awareness training is delivered by people who are deaf or hard of hearing?
Yes, that's right. The presenters always need to be deaf or hard of hearing, and Auslan proficient, of course. The deaf awareness training provided to queer organisations naturally require a deaf queer person to provide that service. And that way, we're ensuring a culturally appropriate fit.
So that the information that's shared is correct and authentic, to use another word?
Yes, that's right.
Coming back to um some of the social and recreational activities that um the uh Rainbow Project is involved with. Before we move to the specifics of those activities, can I ask you, how important do you think it is that there are social and recreational activities aside from things like festivals um available to deaf queer people?
Well, it is important for a number of reasons. First of all, to create an ongoing connection, to contribute to their emotional and social wellbeing, and also to be with like-minded people who share similar commonalities. Being able to have dialogues where they're able to share their general knowledge and inform one another. That's really important. So if a deaf queer person seeks out and discovers new information, they can share that with their community members on various topics. It's really just about being able to engage in these types of conversations, but also for social interactions. And this also segues into the use and evolution of Auslan as a language, creating new concepts that tie into terminology used in the queer community. Having the space and the opportunity to create together in a co-design environment, new concepts and signs in Auslan through shared experiences. That's really important for them.
And do you see that it provides an important opportunity for that peer support?
Yes, absolutely. Peer support is critically important for the deaf queer community and the general community as a whole, because we all need to support one another. Nobody works in isolation. We share similar experiences, similar understandings, a commonality through language and culture. That's what binds us together as people.
And what are some of the examples? So we've touched on or we've discussed the Midsummer Festival. What are some of the other examples of social um events or recreational activities that the Rainbow Project's been involved in?
Just recently, in September, Expression Australia organised an event known as the Rainbow Get Together. And this event was specifically for the deaf queer community to be able to get together and mingle in a social environment. So having access to a safe space where deaf queer members can engage in different types of conversations and also share experiences, enjoy one another's company, catch up with old friends, create new friends. And with this event and my own personal observations, it was wonderful to see the queer community get together in one space, because this doesn't happen often for deaf people. But also the various stalls that were operating from different deaf queer organisations and people knowing where they can reach out and be provided with different types of supports and being able to interact in those types of conversations. Having support provided two-way. But I just wanted to reiterate it's important that we do have safe spaces for the deaf queer community.
I'd like to ask you some questions about um disability pride or disability solidarity. But before we get to that, um am I correct to understand that the event that you just discussed in September was attended by deaf queer people by choice?
Yes.
And what would you say um to any suggestion that that an event like that that is targeted at or or really designed for deaf um people alone is an example of segregation?
No, I wouldn't call it segregation. It's about creating a safe space. And it's imperative that there are safe spaces for deaf queer people to feel safe first and foremost, to be comfortable, to feel authentic, and also to be able to engage with like-minded people. To give you some historical context, deaf people in this country often have not had access to their own safe spaces. In the small moments that they have had these opportunities, we do know, for instance, in deaf schools, they were considered a safe space because ninety-five percent of deaf people are born to hearing parents, which means within the home, the deaf person or deaf child often feels isolated. They don't always have the opportunity to feel comfortable and be their authentic self. However, when the deaf child attends school, they feel a sense of relief. They're able to have their deaf fix. They can communicate in Auslan freely, fully be themselves, be comfortable with who they are, feel safe and interact and mingle with other deaf people who use Auslan as their primary language. And most importantly, feel at home. Because when a deaf person enters a deaf space, they immediately feel comfortable and at ease. Because the deaf community is like family for many deaf people. As a deaf queer person myself, when I attend a deaf queer space, I feel at home. I know that they're like my family. I don't need to think twice about what I need to say.
Can I ask you, in your personal opinion, how this concept of safe spaces for um people with disability sits alongside um the concept or or vision for an inclusive society as a whole?
That's a really interesting question. My personal opinion on that is that firstly, it's important to move away from the medical model. And I'm not being entirely critical of it. It is successful in some instances. But we need to look at the social model of disability in order to provide people with disability an opportunity for social engagement, create safe spaces. And like I said before, deaf people want to have spaces where they can completely be their authentic self and engage in their primary language, Auslan. Because unfortunately, deaf people live in a world that wasn't created for them. Growing up as deaf children, we've had to constantly adapt our communication to hearing people who hear and speak. But the hearing and speaking world didn't adapt for us. We were forced to attend speech therapy, attempt to use a little hearing that we had to fit in to this hearing-speaking world. So most of our lives was spent doing this rather than focusing on our education. And if we had the opportunity to attend deaf spaces, we can feel a burden lifted off our shoulders and feel more comfortable to be ourselves and feel safe and not feel obligated to communicate in a different way that's not natural for us, in a way that suits hearing people. And be more comfortable about talking about these issues with our peers who are deaf and how we deal with these scenarios when they arise. Again, it's another example of being able to be empowered, supporting each other. And I could go on and on about that, but I think I'll keep that response brief.
And do you see that um the creation of those safe spaces actually builds on disability pride or disability leadership to put people with disabilities in a better position to then create inclusive or or work with other non-disabled people to create inclusive spaces in the broader community?
Yes, because if we're able to create these spaces, naturally they need to be deaf or disability-led. People without lived experience can't possibly walk in our shoes. They don't know what it's like to be deaf or to have a disability. So it is really important to be given the opportunity, whether you're deaf or disabled, to create your own space. And also, I often think about leadership opportunities at all levels of leadership within organisations, the opportunity to partake in that. It'd be wonderful to see more deaf leaders and disabled leaders be involved in these organisations because they have these unique lived experiences and are able to work with the diverse community to ensure that all our spaces are much more inclusive because they know what it's like to face barriers and to go through this experience in terms of understanding what their requirements are, having spaces that adapt to their cultural and linguistic needs.
And those spaces then lead to leadership, which then has a a a broader impact on the creation of that inclusive society. Is that what you would say?
Yes.
Ms Beaver, are you able to share with uh the commission some of the aspirations of Expression? Ms Beaver, are you able to share with the Commissioners some of the aspirations of Expression Australia for the future?
Yes, I can. One main aspiration for Expression Australia is to formally establish a deaf centre in Victoria. And at the moment, we're exploring various options to create a deaf centre. And we've been working on that for a few years now, and that work will be ongoing. So the intention is that the deaf centre is a space that's provided, almost like a one-stop shop, if you like. And it would mean that like-minded organisations could coexist within the one location. And it would mean that the deaf community could have access to these services and supports when required. Whether it was parents of deaf children who could attend the organisation, sign language interpreters attending professional development workshops, collaboration sessions, individuals who'd like to learn Auslan. And having the benefit of learning Auslan whilst being fully immersed in a deaf space with deaf community members. And then they become terrific allies for deaf people as a result. Ideally with the deaf centre, it would include deaf spaces and follow the deaf design principles. This concept was established in the United States by a deaf person some time ago who works at Gallaudet University. The concept of deaf space or deaf design looks at architecture within a space that's appropriate for deaf people. So if you think about a corridor, a narrow corridor, isn't conducive to two signing people walking side by side, considering features such as natural lighting. Lighting that can be dimmed or is made appropriate. You may have lifts that are made with perspex or glass where deaf people can sign to one another on different floors. And the ability to be able to communicate across rooms. So like I mentioned before, deaf people being able to sign across larger distances. Because as we know, signers can communicate across rooms. And ensuring that when we have meeting spaces, that desks are arranged in a horseshoe type manner or in a circular fashion so all deaf people can see one another whilst communicating. So there's some examples of deaf architecture and it ensures that there's total accessibility for deaf people and other Auslan users.
How do you believe that the concept of a deaf centre or deaf hub sits alongside a vision for an inclusive Australia? Isn't it that what you've just talked about should be what is aspired to in all areas?
Yes, that'd be absolutely amazing to see the principles of deaf space being incorporated into architectural codes across this country. One example I can think of of a purpose-built space is the Victorian Pride Centre in St Kilda. So that's a space that was purpose-built for the queer community, where queer community organisations are co-located. And for the first time, people have had access to this type of service. Because it was created specifically for the queer community in St Kilda. So if more organisations are able to create spaces like this, where their members are able to congregate, the result is that the mainstream community have a better understanding about the minority group. Particularly with the Pride Centre, they do have cultural heritage aspects intertwined with information that's shared about the struggles and oppression that the queer community has faced historically. And parallels can be drawn with the deaf community around the oppression and the experience that they have faced historically. They have such a rich history. So there is potential there for people to be better educated and informed about these minority groups and what they've experienced in the past. That's why it's important that we do have a deaf centre to be able to demonstrate deaf gain. As an example, if you see a monitor on that's captioned twenty-four seven, it means that everybody universally can gain from this. And historically, this technology was created for deaf people. And now as a person who can hear, you don't need to hear the dialogue in the film on Netflix. You can simply watch it with captions. So there's universal or deaf gain as a result. And in the Pride Centre, we can see that there would be queer gain for the mainstream also. Even thinking about a child who is exploring their sexuality, they could attend a venue such as this with their parents to be better informed, to make key decisions.
Ms Beaver, just one final question for today. Could you share with the Commissioners your vision for an inclusive Australia?
Well, my vision for an inclusive Australia would mean that all Australians completely embrace deaf and hard-of-hearing community members and Auslan. Understanding that Auslan requires a legal protection and should be incorporated into the Disability Discrimination Act. And recognised as an official language of deaf people in Australia. And therefore, this means that all these individuals have better access to Auslan and Auslan interpreting. And the CRPD actually talks about deaf people's right to access language in their own sign language. So the DDA can work in that respect in ensuring that all information is provided in Auslan. And as a result, we can see improvement in the quality of life for deaf people to make informed decisions independently. And I'd love to see that happen in Australia and see further recognition of Auslan as our language. And also see Auslan interpreting provided with all government announcements, not just emergency announcements. In addition to this, I believe that there needs to be better access and education to the medical sphere and government services. So that deaf people are able to receive the supports they require in their everyday lives without the need to individually advocate.
Chair, Council, I would just like to clarify a point that was mentioned earlier, if I could. Before a question was asked to you about the concept of deaf space and whether or not that represents possibly the model of segregation, I want to clarify your response there. When we talk about, when you talk about deaf space, that is accessible to the broader community as well. And that it's not only about a space for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. So I wanted to ask, is that space accessible for people of the broader community, so people that can hear?
Correct. This isn't about creating a segregated space, which I see as spaces created by people without a lived experience. The deaf hub will simply be a space created for people by those with a lived experience of deafness.
Commissioners, that is the evidence of Ms Beaver. If I could ask that Ms Beaver's statement be marked, sorry, be tended into evidence and marked thirty-one dash zero one zero.
Yes, the statement may be admitted into evidence. It will be given that marking.
Thank you, Chair. And I understand we will now break until two ten PM Queensland time.
We're finishing a little early. I'll just check with Ms Eastman as to whether we should start at two or two-ten. She's our official timekeeper.
Chair, I think we can be ready to resume at two PM.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms Beaver, for your evidence and for the statement to the Royal Commission. We do appreciate your assistance and the insights you have given to us with the work that you and your colleagues are performing. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll adjourn and talk to you.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mrs.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Our next two witnesses are joining us online. And I'm very pleased to welcome Angel Dixon, OAM, and Associate Professor Paul Harper. In our discussions, I think when we have the conversation and I ask the questions of them, I'll refer to Angel and Paul by their Christian names. But they should be coming onto the screen in a moment. I'm sure they've made their oaths and affirmations before coming on. So I can see Ms Dixon.
Well.
We're just waiting for Associate Professor Harper. Here he's coming.
That doesn't look like Professor Harper on our screen.
No, you can see that he's coming. All right. So Paul, if you can hear me, it's Kate Eastman speaking. Could you turn your camera on, please?
Ms Dixon, your camera is definitely on. We're just waiting for Professor Harper to, I'm not sure whether he has to turn his camera on or something else is needed. Here he is.
Here he is.
Am I here now?
Yes.
You are.
Sorry, sorry. Not sure. There was a dexter process of clicking for some reason, but the transfer. So you can hear me and see me?
We can. Thank you, Paul, for bearing with us. I've just asked the Chair now to say hello to both of you.
Yes, hello to both of you. Welcome to the Royal Commission and thank you very much for coming remotely in order to give evidence. We very much appreciate your assistance to the Royal Commission and we fervently hope that the information technology works perfectly. If you would be good enough to follow Ms Eastman, she will now ask you some questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just before I start with some questions, to give a context to the topics that we'll talk about this afternoon, which really will focus on changing attitudes and human rights. The Commissioners and those following this proceeding may be aware that Australia has the Australia's Disability Strategy twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. And under the strategy, the governments have committed to taking a range of actions. And there is the vehicles of what are called targeted action plans. The targeted action plan, sometimes called TAPS, designed to make headway in achieving the outcomes in specific areas identified in the Australia's Disability Strategy. Now, one of the TAPS is called the Community Attitudes Tap. And that seeks to set out key actions to improve community attitudes towards people with disability to influence behaviour. And this will be a topic that I will deal with in more detail in the next few days when we have the opportunity to speak to representatives from the governments. But the Community Attitudes Tap sets some particular actions for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and then also for the next bracket, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. The Royal Commission has heard over the course of its public hearings, from its research in private sessions and in submissions, that ableist attitudes and behaviours of people without disability contribute to the exclusion of people with disability, which in turn may result in a heightened risk of violence, abuse, neglect and/or exploitation. Attitudes can run deep, and this session is an opportunity for us to have a very frank discussion about ableism, attitudes and behaviours, but most importantly, how we might approach changing attitudes. So normally I would introduce our two witnesses, but I've asked them whether they would like to introduce themselves and tell you about themselves, the work that they do, and anything they think might be relevant to the discussion that we're about to have. And then Commissioners will continue on by focusing on a few particular topics. So Angel, can I start with you, please? What would you like to tell the Royal Commission about yourself?
Thanks, Kate. And thank you, everyone, for having me today. I will just give myself a bit of a visual description. I am a young woman wearing glasses. I have long dark hair and I'm wearing a very blue summery dress. I am quite nervous and I feel the weight of my community and this commission on me today. So I will be reading mostly from my notes throughout this session. And I do have a little bit of a written bio here about my personal life. I know that you have access to my CV, which is very factual. It talks about my work as the former CEO of the Attitude Foundation. The, my work at Starting with Julius and also as a researcher through Griffith University at the moment. But they share little about my drive for ensuring that people with disability can enjoy and understand their human rights as worthy and equal human beings. I grew up in a family that was irreparably broken by limiting and harmful attitudes towards disability. My brother is a person with disability with a life and story that isn't mine to share. But the attitude that some people's impairments or disability are beyond the realms of human rights drove a very deep-seated belief in segregation and feelings of shame in my family. It was only when I acquired my own impairment that I realised how wrong it all was. And the challenging thing for me then was that not only was I an outsider in a society that no longer welcomed or understood me, but I was also an outsider in my own family. Human rights and attitudes are unequivocally tied, and the data on attitudes towards disability in Australia to me isn't surprising. But it's still pretty horrible. I hope that this conversation can add to and fortify the evidence that the commission has already heard. And that the outcomes of this commission are those of utmost importance to my community and will encourage action.
Thank you, Angel. Paul, can I turn to you? You have provided the Royal Commissioners with a very extensive CV and you have a large number of publications. What would you like to tell the Royal Commissioners about yourself and your work?
Well, similar to Angel, I'd like to paint why I care about creating a more equal society. When I was born, until the age of fourteen, society was designed for me. I was your average white Anglo-Saxon male. Boy, no disability. Then, on the twelfth of October nineteen ninety-three, I was hit by a train. When I woke up in hospital and got out, I rapidly realised society was no longer designed for me. People's views of me had shifted from Paul Harper, the basketballer, who was a good guy in Larrakon, to Paul the blind boy. And quite frankly, it really drove in me this desire to shift it, not just for me, but for everyone in society. And that belief that we can shift society to make it more inclusive has really enthused me throughout my career. me throughout my career, going to law school, through to a PhD, working as a practitioner in law, Associate Professor at the moment, and also through my sporting career where I was a dual Paralympian, dual Commonwealth Games athlete. And through that, I was able to shift a lot of attitudes about what can and can't be done by people with disabilities. And so throughout all of these walks of life, I now come to you today excited by the opportunity to hopefully, hopefully, help the Disability Royal Commission shift the dial on inclusion in society.
Well, thank you both very much. And I want to start with language as the first topic. Often, when we think about the language used to describe people with disability or the circumstances in which people with disability live, the language can sound very confronting, and it can be language that intentionally excludes or separates people with disability. So, we hear language to describe people who use wheelchairs as being confined to wheelchairs. And a lot of that language really stems from looking at the person's impairment and using the impairment to give identity. So, we sometimes describe this language as ableist. But I want to start, Angel, by asking you about why language is important when it comes to changing attitudes about and towards disability. So, could I invite you? And if you've got notes, please read them. But if you just want to speak freely, also feel free to do whatever you would like to do to answer the questions. So, over to you, Angel.
Thank you. As I said, I really don't want to miss anything, and I could speak on these topics for hours. So, I've done my best to condense my notes. So, I'm going to focus on my notes. So, all forms of language and the words we use to describe ourselves and others impacts every area of life, as I'm sure we all know. The presence of ableism and disabledism is so ingrained in our daily lives and language that a lot of the time we're not even aware that it's happening. It's discrimination in plain sight, and it certainly isn't limited to our language, but language perpetuates it. I have quite a sensitive lens for all of this, call it an occupational hazard, and I'm aware that even the word ableism is somewhat problematic. The word ableism was coined in a different time. The etymology of the word is patterned with sexism, racism and the like, but the foundation of the word is able-bodied. As a community, we've actually moved towards disability status as our demographic identifier, to steer away from ability and other euphemisms with unintentional ableist connections. It's pretty rough when we're at the mercy of even the words that we use to describe our own discrimination. Instead, I call it what it is, discrimination in favour of people without disability. And shifting perspectives through framing, like we do at Attitude Foundation, learning about and understanding the words we use and the language that we use, and using it as a change mechanism in and of itself, I think is really underrated.
So, Paul, what do you see is the importance of language? As lawyers, language can be very important to the works that we do. We define terms. We rely on the meaning of words to fashion how people should behave, to determine what is inappropriate. How do you see language as being important when it comes to the attitudes towards people with disability?
Language is profoundly impactful. If you think about, I mean, we're all lawyers, well, the benches of lawyers. If you think about a personal injury claim, on one side you've got the plaintiff, and they will talk about suffering and the heartache caused by this disability. On the other hand, you've got the defendant lawyers trying to paint another picture. Well, that image of disability as suffering, as arduous, as a problem, as a sin, still enthuses the many people in society. They don't, you don't hear people say, "Oh, you've got a baby boy. Congratulations." "Oh, they're blind." You know, they're, "Oh, you poor thing." Like, that's the sort of language. It's still common. And you see that in a lot of media campaigns to try and attract money. So, particularly overseas, if you look at the Convention of the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, including observations, and like going through the Article 8 COs, you see a lot of that sort of rhetoric happening overseas, and happens here in Australia as well. And I think what we really need to do is take proactive measures reinforced by regulatory interventions that reinforce that positive language should be used. And those that use offensive language need to be somehow, maybe not sanctioned by, you know, confined, but it needs to be drawn to their attention that that language is not appropriate, particularly in certain professions.
Now, you might find this a strange question for me to ask at this stage of the Royal Commission, but how can people without disability be better disability allies when it comes to choice of language? Angel, do you want to start on that question?
I do. I actually want to just touch on, before we head into that one, on the link between language and representation that's here, because I think that that kind of leads into the allyship discussion. A significant piece of the language discussion is actually identity and the feelings attached to the words because of the stigmas and institutional pressures that we have. The way that people with disability represent themselves using language isn't static, and people identify differently in general. But they also identify differently as they learn and change and grow as a person. And we need to allow for that as a society. I wholeheartedly identify as a person with disability, and depending on how disabling the barriers around me feel, I will call myself disabled. But I absolutely know that my experience of disability and impairment cohabitate and react on each other. But I still separate disability and impairment out in my language to delineate between the role society plays in inclusion and that which relates to the individual. I also do it to help create space and dialogue about the dynamics at play within the community and the language used and the tools that we can use to move closer to inclusion. So, my language doesn't even fit into a person-first or identity-first box. And I think the only way to ensure that all people can use words that are comfortable for them is for organisational, institutional and government and structural levels to intentionally, consistently use human rights and CRPD inclusive language as a guide.
And does this flow into education and the importance of education in people without disability being better disability allies? And I raise this because some people without disability may feel a nervousness about saying the wrong thing. And so, rather than feel they've said the wrong thing or create an awkward situation, they may say nothing at all. For the person with disability, that may be even more exclusionary than the opportunity to learn from a mistake. So, Angel, can you talk to how important education is?
I can. I find it, it's a really tough and nuanced question because there is such a dialogue in our community about, you know, some people want to be said hello to. They want people to come up and ask about, you know, why they use a wheelchair and they welcome that, other people don't. There's that real confusion, and I call it exclusion because of confusion, around language and also inclusiveness and welcoming in general. I feel that in an ideal world, if we all held a human rights and social model perspective of disability, along with an understanding that disability is a mismatch between person and environment, then those stigmas and the pressures that are felt by people with disability would decrease. Individual language preferences could prevail, and discussions around those meaningful and practical supports would be much more comfortable for everyone. And unfortunately, in our current environment, my suggestions would just have to be that people with disability, without disability, need to analyse the words they use as prioritatives, their perspectives on disability and impairment, and their views on human rights, and also on segregation. Because of our collective non-disabled perspectives that we live with, that analysis or that personal introspection will cost you a significant ego hit. It will mean digging deep into what you potentially think about your own future, because the likelihood is that everyone will experience some form of disability or impairment in their lifetime. But if you experience that ego hit, that's how you know you're doing it right. I'd also suggest that you always ask a person their preferred use of language, which is something that we all know, but also to never tell a person with disability what words they should and shouldn't use.
Paul, you work in circles at the university, and it's not uncommon for universities and for businesses to require staff to undergo what's now called disability confidence training. And part of that might be to give you confidence in the language that you use as an able person. Now, this is a very unusual thing, to have to teach people without disability to be confident around people with disability. And part of that is to get the language right. Paul, how do these programmes work? And what's your experience of whether they actually do something to change or to sensitize people to the language that they use?
I think a lot of it comes down to intent. So, if somebody comes along and does that sort of training, but they have a good intent to be inclusive, even if they get language wrong, at the end of the day, if someone has good intent, then the person who's receiving potentially something they may not otherwise like is usually, well, at least I am anyway, more open to it. So, a good example would be a toddler who lies across the street near a primary school going home. And so, kids will walk along and ask questions about the guide dog. Now, they're kids, so I'm incredibly open and like to help them educate. Now, that's because their intent is curiosity, and it's a good intent. They're trying to be educated, they're trying to learn. Someone who was potentially older, asking a dumb question or saying something stupid, I may not have the same level of acceptance, but that comes down to intent. And I think the disability confidence training helps people who do want to do the right thing have some form of framework and confidence that they know the language. And it is a shame that we have to relearn how we communicate, but you've got to realise that how fast has disability inclusion come? It's faster than, I shouldn't use the example of a freight train because I was hit by a train, but it's super fast. When I was hit by a train at the age of 14, people suggested to me a sheltered workshop. Now, people are suggesting to me it's time for a promotion to full professor. So, we're looking at a very different world in only a very short period. And that rapid change in how we view disability in society, I think is why we need to do this, take this step and actually get out there and help communicate on how the new paradigm is meant to be communicated.
Well, that leads nicely into the next topic I want to ask both of you about, and that is to achieve success in changing attitudes and behaviours. It's the case, isn't it, that interventions must be targeted across key life domains and experiences for people with disability. And Angel, I want to start by asking you about the importance of taking a whole-of-life approach to ensure that interventions impact on the day-to-day lives of people, rather than keep them at these sort of abstract levels. Do you want to speak to that topic?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Yeah, to me, on a good day, it still feels like we're being asked to choose which domains we want partial or compromised access to. I guess there's always competing needs and funding that it's always raised as a barrier to thorough interventions across all of the domains. But the reality is, is that interventions are needed across all domains because people with disability exist across all domains. And we interact with different domains throughout a lifetime. And currently, I personally feel like it is hard to dip in and out of those domains. They're all failing us in some way. The other thing to note is probably that initiatives to change societal attitudes are very important, but they're not going to succeed unless we address the structural and systemic issues that result in the exclusion and segregation of people with disability. And initiatives to change attitudes need to go hand-in-hand with initiatives to phase out segregation on a basis of disability, and we need to abandon those exclusionary practices and policies.
Well, Paul, you've touched on your experience of suggesting that your life might be one working in a segregated employment setting, but that's obviously not a path that you've taken. How important is it to speak to the experiences of people over key life domains, to move away from segregation as being an option, or to also think about moving from segregated settings into a broader community experience? Do you want to speak to that topic, just taking from how Angel's described those concerns?
I can. I think institutionalising people in particular is against the CRPD, Article 19. We have to de-institutionalise. We have to give support. The same with education. We don't want to have people stuck in special schools where they're not able to develop alongside their peers. Same for workplaces. We don't want a social apartheid. But to get that fixed, we need to actually put in place frameworks which will enable it to occur. And that's attitude, yes, but as Angel observed, it needs also some actual measures. So, the Disability Discrimination Act, for example, it's 30 years old, it's anti-discrimination. So, it talks of reasonable adjustments and accommodation, making changes when a person comes along. But there's no emphasis on positive duties, universal design. You don't want to have the situation where I hop off the bus and suddenly find, if I was in a wheelchair, which I'm not, but I'll suddenly find there's no ramp, no lift, the lift is broken. What do you do? Well, if you're doing an exam in one hour, you've got to then somehow get off that raised platform, get another bus. You just miss it. And there's all the other efforts we could do, that's just as simple. You cannot do that. So, these barriers in society, we have to resource. When, so, I started with institutionalisation. Well, you can close down an institution, but where do people go? Where are they going to live? You need to have in place the health system, the social security system, and housing system that enables people to go from exclusion to inclusion in our society.
And Angel, one aspect of moving from exclusion to inclusion is leadership, opportunities, disability leadership and representation. Do you want to speak to the importance of representation and leadership?
I think Paul and I are doing this good thing where I kind of say the bad stuff and he does all the solutions-based stuff. So, I think we might speak to that format. But Paul has just touched on universal design. So, in the same way that utilising universal design and inclusion solves human problems, not just disability, I think representative leadership does the same thing. Standard leadership literature reflects that leadership is a skill not that just people in power have. Anyone can be a leader. And it's not widely understood that there is a difference between service providers and disability-led organisations. I hope that it's already clear that people with disability need to be leading initiatives and organisations and content and research and anything about us. But also when it comes to revolutionising systems for inclusion, I guarantee that a person with lived experience would do that faster and more effectively.
And Paul, can I...
There's so many examples.
Go ahead, Angel. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. There's so many examples of this, particularly in my media and advertising work, where you could try and affect the change from the bottom up, but it gets stymied at some point, and that change really needs to come from the top down. I feel that we're still at a point where people with disability in leadership roles are pioneering, which brings with it a greater weight to carry. They're not only trying to cut the safe path for themselves, but they're trying to cut a path for other people. And the most common access problems are the ones that Paul has already addressed. How can you access leading when you can't access leading? And to compound that with my lens of media, the respected and acclaimed leaders in the disability space right now are repeatedly having their work overshadowed and reduced by journalists and media focusing on their impairment or their challenges, rather than their work in publications and large news segments. Even our much-needed leaders on social media experience silence... Even our much-needed leaders on social media experience silencing and abuse because of these pervasive attitudes. I feel that a solution for at least the media element is that traditional ways of working need to be redesigned to allow co-design and self-determination. At Attitude Foundation, that's what we work on. Our documentary series Perspective Shift was created in an effort to provide a platform of stories for people with disability, not simply leaders. But as it turned out, the constant self-advocacy and barrier mitigation transformed all of the people in our series into leaders in some way, which sounds like a positive, but actually that's a really terrible negative, because imagine what they could have done with all of that time and energy.
Can I move to the next topic, which is some practical guidance and discussion about what interventions you think are most successful at changing attitudes and behaviours? I think there's a few that we want to talk about, peer support, role modelling, restructuring, capacity building. Paul, can I start with you on this topic? What do you think are the most successful measures that really have the effect of changing attitudes and behaviours?
There's, in that, there's a number. I mean, if you wanna focus on the individual with a disability, role modelling is critical. But it's also critical for people without a disability. Take, for example, a university professor such as myself who's blind. All those students with a dis- without a disability who see me, see someone who's an authority, who's um I hope to think intelligent, um communicating and doing their job. So they, they have their views of disability shifted by my presence. Those with a disability reach out to me, you know, I mentor a number of people and they directly benefit. But also, if you wanted to get into some other measures beyond just that, those mentoring, it's really creating frameworks. I had regulatory frameworks, both um in law and also in policy, that shift. And I think strategy here is like, um is critical. So the action plans. Like at the University of Queensland, we've had disability action plans since nineteen ninety-nine. And in recent times, we've had a um organisational shift where there's increased emphasis on inclusion at the council level. And that, that has a real impact on everyone across the university. And I could go on about how important leadership is, but I really, really can't emphasise enough that if you're a leader of an organisation, you need to look around. And if there's no one with a disability in senior positions, you are not representing your community because at least twenty percent of the community has some form of disability. And if you think about the university sector, at the University of Queensland, we have over ten percent of our students of our student population has a disability, so one in ten students. So you need to have people with disabilities in senior positions throughout every organisation in Australia because that is our community.
And Angel, what um have you observed, particularly in your work at the Attitude Foundation and in your own life? Are the types of interventions that are most successful at changing attitudes and behaviours?
Um, I am, I think that, that like I said earlier, I think all initiatives need to happen all at the same time so that we can really tackle this thing. Um and I don't feel anything's going to change until we really address those structural and systemic issues. Um I could probably speak a little bit to the peer support and role modelling um in a bit of a different way to what Paul has discussed. Um fifteen years ago, when I acquired my impairment, um as a, with a complex diagnosis, I wasn't offered any peer support or mentorship. I had to source that for myself. And through my work at the university now, I'm really aware of the impact that peer support or no peer support can have. I'm actually finding at the moment in healthcare that when I turn up for research interviews with people with newly acquired impairments, I'm spending most of my time teaching them how to manoeuvre a wheelchair, how to put on shoes with paralysed feet or how to advocate for themselves in instances where they feel like their rights are being stripped from them. And I'm a researcher and I'm the only peer support that they've had access to. So I, I feel like role modelling in those small areas has a lot to do with upskilling of people with disability, even though it should not be the role of people with disability to upskill themselves to fit into a system that doesn't work for them. As I said, these things interplay, but this peer support has a huge impact, particularly from that very first instance in healthcare.
Can I turn to the next topic, which is the level of intervention? So just building on the discussion that we've had, and Angel, if I've skipped anything or any topic that you've got notes on you want to speak to, just pull me back and let me know. But I think we're, from a royal commission perspective, thinking about what is effective in changing community attitudes and looking at the way in which we're doing that at particular levels, be it at a relationship or community level, at an organisation or institutional level, at a government or structural level, there's a number of different ways of looking at when and how changing attitudes will be important. But working out what's successful, what's going to achieve change is quite challenging. So what, um Angel, are your views on the level or the combination of levels that need to be addressed? Do you want to start on that topic and then, Paul, I'll come to you?
Um. So I, there's so many things to, to address in that. And I'm frantically scrolling through my notes to try and combine them all. Um.
Take your time, there's no rush.
No, it's, it's fine. Paul has already touched on universal design and accessibility, uh and and I would like to talk, I guess, about a hybrid concept of universal design and inclusive design. Um and bringing into that the difference between co-design and consultation of people with disability. Um in the research that I do at the moment, we're actually working from a concept called extreme citizen science because we've had to try and work around the barriers to academia, the barriers within education. We've tried to come up with an ultra-inclusive way to bring citizens into their own research. And I think that's something, all these little things that people with disability are utilizing or trying to come up with adaptations. Those things need to be taken on board through every level. We need to make sure that we have leaders in place. We need to also make sure that there's opportunities for grassroots organisations to be able to feed up. Um. And that we all need to acknowledge this human rights focus and perspective because that isn't always that, that human rights focus is obscured in the mix of all of the varying understandings of inclusion in our society.
Paul, do you, do you want to comment on the different levels from a very personal relationship level community, organisation and up to government, what i- in bringing these different levels together? What do you think is successful at changing attitudes and promoting change of behaviour?
Well, I think one aspect, we really need to create belief that people with disabilities are able to succeed and belong in society. I know that might sound a bit glib, but without belief, we, it's very hard to normalise inclusion. For, and I think it comes down to, could you imagine building a building without women's toilets? Well, when, so for example, Pound Hall at Harvard Law School was built, it had one in the basement. So that used to be the norm. We've shifted that and we could not imagine excluding women by not having women's toilets in a building. Now, we want this, I wanna see people with disabilities treated the same, that no one could imagine not including us. So when someone designs a website, when someone designs a building, when someone designs a program, infrastructure, everything in society, people would not even contemplate not being inclusive. And as far as government go, um I think, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm quite chuffed because I literally, to show a real world impact during this disability royal commission, the terms of the reference group for the universities accord was just announced and I'm on the reference group. And I've got about forty emails from various people across the sector. So if you wanna see about changing views and making people with disabilities being people saying, hey, look, that person can succeed with a disability, therefore other people can. Government, business, when you appoint someone with a disability to a senior position, it creates belief in others that this person can succeed with a disability and that others can. Because let's not talk about that pressure that per individual feels because sometimes when I am succeeding um and I'm the first person with a disability or one of the first to do something, it's, people are almost like, well, whether or not people with disabilities can succeed hinges on whether I do a good job. And then that's a little bit of pressure that sometimes I'd, I'd rather go home and not have to worry about.
Can I ask you both now about the relevance of taking a human rights-based approach in any interventions to uh address attitudes and behaviours? And Angel, you've spoken to the C R P D and Paul, you've also spoken to the C R P D. And the way you've spoken about the C R P D is that it's not something extra or different, it's just woven in to the way in which you talk about inclusion and change. What um can we learn from using a human rights-based approach in addressing changes of attitudes and behaviours? Angel, is that something you want to speak to first and then, Paul, I'll come to you?
Yes, thank you. Um this might be a long one. I, I think where I'm working at the moment in the healthcare system probably has the greatest evidence that we need change there and it probably depicts the way human rights or the lack of human rights are playing out within our lives and in our systems at the moment. So I'm gonna speak to that a little bit. Um. Dignity is a word that's enshrined in human rights policy and frameworks, but as a concept, I feel that it's somewhat lost in our healthcare system. There's been a big push towards uh from, I guess, the diversity and inclusion space towards a human rights base focused on dignity rather than inclusion. It's dignity that includes principles like inclusion, accessibility, and it acknowledges the inherent value of every individual regardless of positional power and privilege. The cultural barriers that we've been talking about, I think, are really gifted to us and reinforced in our healthcare system. And that's how they spread. Um I'm hearing stories, story after story, but I'm still hearing stories of friends personally who were pregnant and who have had a scan that suggests a specific diagnosis. And before they receive results or a social worker is called, which is never offered, doctors are still offering late-term terminations. I personally know far too many people who've taken their lives because of unmet needs, harm or medical and non-disabled perspectives on the way they should function or fit into the world around them. And those instances include the loved ones and supporters of those people with disability. Practitioners and staff are doing the very best they can in an under-resourced environment. But we've ended up with a healthcare system that has very specific ideas on what health is and what quality, quality of life is. Practitioners are so focused on recovery that they struggle to acknowledge people as people and not a diagnosis or just a job to be done. I think the other things that I can probably speak to here is an uncovering in our previous data of a, of a study that we've done, which was this overwhelming cry from people with disability simply for acknowledgement. Acknowledgement, not in spite of their impairment or identity, not because of it, and not transcending the challenges because they've achieved something. It's just being acknowledged as a human being with all of it, with the same human rights, with the full dimension of personhood, otherwise known as dignity. And I think that's the true relevance, ensuring that everyone can enjoy their human rights under human rights laws, make sure that they feel protected and safe within those laws. Um I think that the only reason, the only way that we can fix all of these things that we've spoken about is by targeting all le- levels and focusing on co-design, not consultation, which means engaging people with disability at every phase in system and policy design, as well as u- utilizing universal and inclusive design and transforming and transition, transitioning out of non-segregated models. And I think it's gonna take a lot of time, effort and money from an organizational and policy and government level.
Paul, uh taking a human rights approach to interventions, how do you translate some of these human rights which are described in very broad and general terms into very practical ways of actioning change?
Well, I, I think um the, the human rights sound broad, but if you actually pick up the Convention on Rights of Persons with Disabilities, read it and read the general comments that the um C R P D commis- C R B, sorry, cut it off there, the C R P D committee have issued. There's, there's a fair bit, fair bit of guidance there which we can draw from. And I think some of those need to be a recognition that it's just simply not acceptable for people to be ableist in certain situations. And I think we really need to take a strong stance where people in our community are, are especially vulnerable. Say, for example, young children with a disability. Now, I've heard of a kid, a principal who told a kid, a seven-year-old with autism that unless they go out and play with other kids in the playground, they won't get able to go up in the, the next grade. Now, obviously, the child with autism, which the principal knows, has a disability which reduces their desire to play with other kids. Now, I work as an academic and if I had to say you have to, you have to love communicating with other people to be successful, a lot of my colleagues, particularly in the physics department, wouldn't be here. So it was absolute nonsense, ableist. Now, the, the board heard about that, their chair, their board, and nothing was done. Now, could you imagine if that person, that this principal had said um something about, you're Aboriginal, so you can't be successful, you're a woman? Well, they'd probably be sanctioned, maybe even dismissed, but it's because we accept ableism. And the other example, um I'll build on what Angel said about the healthcare system, well, it is a really big challenge for the healthcare system because the human rights framework is built on the social model, which itself was developed to resist the medicalisation of disability. The medical model is what drives the healthcare system. So this is real conflict for them because it's an issue on disability. And if you go with nothing about us without us, that's just for general society. So you should have laws and policy decision-making, including people with disabilities. But if it is on disability specifically, such as the N D I S, where I have to applaud the government for putting Kurt and Chad, Kurt Fernley, sorry, we used to be Paralympics together. So that was, no disrespect intended. Um Mystic Fernley on as chair of the N D I A, I mean, that's what we need to see, it's disability specific. What about the healthcare system? How much of that is to do with people with disability? You're rehabilitating people, sometimes you're helping people survive for long term. So people with disabilities should have a prominent, and I would say, leading role in APRA and other regulatory frameworks that deal with the healthcare system. After all, while a blind person such as myself can't um mend a, mend, mend a leg, for example, it's broken very easily, there's nothing stopping me being a successful administrator.
We are, I feel like we've just touched the surface and um and conscious of the time. Angel, can I ask if there's any other topics that I have overlooked in your notes that you wanted to speak to the commissioners about or anything else you'd like to share with the commissioners as they think about ways forward in changing community attitudes and behaviour, building inclusion and moving away from segregation?
I think that we should probably stop there because otherwise I will continue for a few hours. Um but I could probably just echo Paul's comment, and I think I'm really glad that we're finishing here. Paul, even on our conference call before we agreed to do this, made a great contrast between the frameworks and things in place, the policies in place for, in, in workplaces for First Nations people in contrast to instances of um discrimination against people with disability in a workplace. And I, I find this in research, I find this actually across all of our work in media. There are some very formal and practical policies at high levels about how to engage with First Nations people and they're robust and they in no way dismantle the ba- the complete myriad of barriers that are there, but at least they're a start to a more dignified approach. There is nothing in place for people with disability and we've got a bunch of organizations and wonderful people that are trying to invigorate and start something that is consistent, but that really needs to happen from the top down.
Thank you, Angel. Paul, any final uh, observations or matters that you'd like to share with the commissioners?
Yeah, well, um, I would like to say something. When I, I was at Harvard Law School when the Royal Commission was announced and that was fantastic because I had to give a speech that night and I had nothing to talk about. So I could talk about how profoundly impactful this Royal Commission will be. And one of the tests I, I, I said was, how bold will they be taking this opportunity once in a lifetime to shift the dial? Don't just tinker, don't do incremental, but say something which will transform society. Because if you look at it, two thousand years ago, if you read the Bible, you had the beggar sitting by the side of the road. A blind man, um, and uh, go, Jesus Nazareth, Nazareth, uh, calling out to Jesus and told to be silent, told to stay away, you're not part of society. Well, in many walks of Australian life, that still happens. People with disabilities are still told to be, live somewhere separate, studies somewhere separate. We need something profound which will shift thousands of years of exclusion. And no pressure to the Royal Commission, but you guys have the opportunity to change the world for the better. So I hope you take up the opportunity and I look forward to reading the final report.
Yeah, we don't need any more awareness campaigns. Thank you. Just.
Robust laws, frameworks, like as you said, Indigenous, for example, in funding in higher education, you need to have Indigenous executives to attract the funding. Why is that, why is that not the case for disability? And it's not like we don't have it in people with disabilities in executive roles already. So it wouldn't be like you'd be saying you have to do this in the industry where there's no one. Graham Innes is now C T U Chancellor. Um, you've got Executive Dean who's blind at Griffith, um, you've got, there's people, sorry, across the country already in such positions. It's about the, about frameworks creating, being created that ensure equality can be achieved and maintained.
I think that's um, an excellent note to end on and thank you both for your time and the preparation and Angel preparing all your notes for the discussion today and um, we're very grateful for the contribution you've made to the Royal Commission. Thank you both. Chair.
Yes, thank you very much uh, indeed for uh, your thoughtful observations and Paul for your exhortation to be bold. Uh, that's something that has occupied a great deal of our time. And we're very grateful to each of you for your suggestions and your insights. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
So Chair, we'll adjourn for ten minutes, but just before we do that, I'll just tender the more formal uh, biography for Angel and Associate Professor Harper's C V. If you could receive both those documents into evidence and mark them Exhibit thirty-one point zero one one point one and Exhibit thirty-one point zero one one point two. I'm sorry, it's a bit clunky, but.
Sorry, is it thirty-one point oh oh one?
Yeah, so thirty-one eleven point one and thirty-one eleven point two.
Okay, thank you very much. Those two C Vs will be admitted into evidence with those markings. Are there any other documents that?
No.
For this, for these witnesses?
No.
All right. Thank you very much indeed again and we'll now adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Um, Commissioner, I am very pleased to uh, introduce you to our final witness for today, Margarita Coppolino, who's here with us in the hearing room in Brisbane. And uh, perhaps Chair, after you've uh, greeted Miss Coppolino, I will introduce her and then we've got a lot of questions that we need to work our way through.
Miss Coppolino, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission today at the Brisbane Hearing Room. We very much appreciate your attendance and we're looking forward to the evidence that you will give. Thank you for being prepared to help the Royal Commission. It's very important for us to receive help from you and from others who are uh, similarly situated. Um, if you'll be good enough to follow Miss Eastman, she will now ask you some questions. Please take your time. And if you need a break, just let us know.
Uh, Miss Coppolino, would you prefer that I call you Margarita or Miss Coppolino?
Uh, what if I call you Margarita? Uh, if I may call you.
Of course you can do that. Now, I want to introduce you. You are an advocate and a disability and inclusion consultant, as well as an accredited trainer, mediator, auditor and company director. And these are some of the current positions that you hold. You are on the Subcommittee Co-Chair of the International Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Trans and Intersex Association, O C A N E R Board and the Director of that World Board, is that right? Yes? You are on the Victorian Ministerial L G B T I Task Force as a member. You are a member of the S B S Community Advisory Committee. You are a council member of the Victorian N D I S Community Advisory Council.
Yep.
You are the Chair of the Ethnic Communities Council of Victoria Disability and Cold, so culturally and linguistically diverse Victoria statewide network. You are a, a member of the N D I S Independent Advisory Council Access and Inclusion Working Group. You are the Vice Chair of the Drummond Street Services and Queer Space Services. And you are a member of the C B A External Cultural Diversity Advisory Council Committee. Is that right? And you are up until October this year were the President of the National Ethnic Disability Alliance, N I D A. And um, you oversaw N I D A's work in preparing the joint submission with P W D A and F E C A that uh, contributed to our recent public hearing on cold and culturally linguistically diverse communities. Is that right?
My apologies, uh, Kate, if I know. Um, I actually didn't oversee the work of uh, the Disability Royal Commission work, uh, that was actually done internally on president, so I actually didn't do not actually do any of the internal work.
Do you have done, you have done uh, some work with the Royal Commission and assisted us on some community engagements?
Yes.
And you're also aware of the work that the Royal Commission did as part of a closed session when the Royal Commission has held Public Hearing seventeen, looking at the experiences of women and girls. We, with respect to family and domestic violence and you're aware of that closed session work that we did with respect to L G B T I people.
Uh, what particular session? Yes?
Uh, now, you describe yourself as a woman of short stature, a lesbian and a first generation Australian. Are there any other characteristics or adjectives that you'd like to describe yourself?
Yes, um, also notice my three cots.
Mm-hmm, all right. Uh, so I have asked you to come to the Royal Commission to really draw on your experience, your life lived through these intersectional communities and lenses and to talk to the commissioners about a vision for an inclusive Australia that really understands and works with the intersectional space. So I'm going to ask you some questions around those areas. Please tell me if there's any questions that you don't want to answer, but otherwise can we go for it? So what is your vision of an inclusive Australia?
Okay, before I start uh, with my answer today, there's something I'd like to do first. First of all, I'd like to begin today by acknowledging the tone and the gent- people here today, concerns of the land of which we are gathered today and paying my respects to their elders past and present. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait people here today. I also wish your knowledge, Amy Griffiths, one of the founding members of First People Disability Network. Uh, he is the CEO, uh, has been for twenty-three years. Also would like to acknowledge Annie Tohren, who's the Deputy CEO. And not forgetting the amazing advocacy of the deaf, elderly law to give voices to all Aboriginal people which are hearing impaired. I also would like to thank and recognize the leadership of Commissioner Mason as First Nation woman um, in the disability Royal Commission. I also would like to thank Commissioner Garvali and Commissioner Matur for their representation of disability and for the L G B T I Q A platform. As you see, I have the fire, uh, so I wanted to make sure today was the extent of all exceptions. Now, next to the question. To have an inclusive Australia, we need to address the violent path of country, uh, of the past, the country from invasion of this continent on onwards. We will not achieve disability justice until we reconcile systemic and institution violence in Australia. Collarization causes disability and makes disability worse, especially for First Nations communities. We always need to have intersectional approach to make sure we are seen as whole people with multiple identities that need to be recognized and understood. Intersectionality means that when we think about disability inclusion, that no one is left behind. And everyone is at the table, included, participating or living in our community. A human rights approach to disability is essential for an inclusive Australia so that we can all enjoy our human rights on equal basis. And love, but not lose. I have to turn the page. What's important now for here, so my vision of an inclusive Australia is when disability, the difference of our bodies, minds, is understood and raised and accommodated. And celebrated, it's been completely normal as part of community. That is my answer.
Thank you. So that puts a big challenge to us. I want to ask you, how in addressing this vision of an inclusive Australia do we ensure that the intersectional experiences are captured rather than siloed off?
Hey, that's a really interesting question. I've thought quite a bit about this. But first of all, I'd like to start by saying every person has multiple intersectional identities. But some women, their intersectional identities may provide a degree of privilege, but for others, it may result in more discrimination. Some women are at higher risk of different types of discrimination, such as racism, class, oppression, homophobic, transphobia, age, ageism, ableism, disability, just because she has a variation of sex. The intersectional approach suggests that tackling disability in one group may not address discrimination and marginalization experience of all other groups required. Therefore, work to prevent gender-based inequity cannot be completed in isolation for work to address other forms of discrimination. We need to work as a collective.
What does that involve?
Choose to organize ourselves in intersectional communities. We have a disability people's organization, uh, especially for First Nations people, women and girls, people from non-speaking backgrounds, people from L G B T I Q A, plus background, et cetera. It is important that we resource and support to organize how we choose to. Love, but not lose. Organization conservatives that have cross-disability approach uh, for disability and population especially, approach also needs to work in intersectional way. For example, I'll use me. I am a member of the short-tached organization, but I'm a Wasau woman, I'm a Wasau, a lesbian. And uh, I need my short-tached organization to think about gender and sexism and provide support and advocate on issues specific to women who are short statured. Similarly, I need them to understand that specific discrimination that lesbians with disabilities face. When those organizations do work about, uh, uh, and, sorry, when those organizations do work about sexual and, 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 and. They need to include lesbians in the work and make it relevant.
Now, you've um, been very generous in working with the Royal Commission and to me personally, in teaching me about the importance of co-design and understanding what that actually means. So uh, can I ask you to talk about the role of co-design in capturing international experiences? And why, why is that so important that we do co-design rather than just a, a consultation or a, a co-production?
Great question, Kate. I, I know you and I have had many discussions about what co-design means and what is the practice. But for today, my answer is that general co-design is critical in capturing intersectional experience. Unfortunately, we see time, co-design being used when what is actually happening is actually something else. For example, concentration. Not my experience with you.
Thank you.
I've been involved in too many different spaces which have been called co-design, where it felt like terrorism. Government, private, public sectors and providers of services to people with disabilities need to work with us as people with disabilities, including people from First Nation backgrounds, women, people from cold backgrounds, people from L G B T I Q communities. So that when laws are being developed, programs and services designed, uh, that intersectional experience and needs are understood and for true co-design makes inclusive, making sure that nobody gets left behind.
So i- is there a role for an inclusive framework to ensure different aspects of diversity can be considered holistically or together?
And again, great question. Yes, of course, intersectional uh, inclusion framework would ensure different aspects of our diversity are considered. And we are seen as a whole person, not just one or two parts of us. As I said earlier, I've got many different intersectional lengths and projects. I need to be seen as a whole person, not just a person of short stature, but also as a woman, a person who's hard to hear in. A lesbian, a career leader, a survivor, a person from cold backgrounds, a worker, a volunteer, a changemaker, et cetera. Truly, person-centered approaches are essential so that we provide attachment and support and reference programs around people with disabilities. Rather than trying to get us awkwardly and uncomfortably get into environments and services that leave important parts of our identity behind.
All right, now, this could be me, uh, but Chair, we just need to have a very short moment because some of our audio is not working so well at the moment. The commissioners might be aware of that as well. So if we could have a shorter German. I think a shorter German. I think a shorter German just allows us to test things, so. My apologies. We'll just fix up the, the audio. Thank you. We'll let you know.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Again, Miss Coppolino, I'm sorry for that interruption. We do have our little difficulties with I T from time to time.
We checked the line.
It's not coming through. Uh it's not appearing in front of me for some reason.
So much better.
Sorry about that, Chair.
That's quite all right.
I've jinked, I've jinked it for some reason.
You think, you think you're jinxed.
Margaret, let me know if the live captioning is coming through now.
Uh it's, yes, it is now.
We're working now. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if it.
It is, it's working.
Pops off again, let me know.
I can hear you beautifully now.
All right, I want to move to topic two. And uh I wanted to ask you about what needs to be in place to support ongoing advocacy, including formalised advocacy through advocacy groups, but also building skill and capacity for self-advocacy. The role of advocacy is something that the Royal Commission uh has examined and you've heard us speak about the work and the importance of advocacy, both at a group level but also an individual level. So what do you see as the importance of or the role of advocacy?
Another great question, probably one of my favourite questions. Um advocacy seeks to ensure that all people um in society are able to have their voices heard on issues that are important to them, protect and promote their rights, have their views and wishes generally considered when decisions are being made about their lives and dispute for themselves more importantly.
So there's different types of advocacy and why are those different types important? If, for example, we look at the formalised advocacy work of advocacy groups, individual advocacy or self-advocacy, do you want to speak to that issue?
Well, look, you know, um all types of advocacy are important for the wellbeing of our disability community and for us as individuals. Advocacy makes our lives safer and helps us to equally enjoy our human rights. It is a shame that governments have historically viewed some form of advocacy as more valuable and more important than other forms of advocacy. They are all equally important. This has been a real failure of governments. I have utilised and benefited from nearly all advocacy tasks in my sixty-two years as a person with a disability. And I'm going to go further. This includes, one, self-advocacy, I've learnt skills about how to speak up for myself and defend for my rights. Individual advocacy, sometimes I've been ignored and been too beaten down to self-advocate. So I've got professional advocates to support me and sit beside me and advocate with and for me. Systemic advocacy, I'm a participant of N D I S and N D I S would never be created had it not been for systemic advocacy that people with disabilities and disability people's organisations fought for. Legal advocacy, there are times in my life where I've been discriminated against and got a pass in support from disability legal advocacy. Advocates, so uh so that I know my rights and how to use compliance mechanisms to access justice. Peer support, the disability people's organisations have been very important to me. Being in groups and organisations of other people with disabilities like Women with Disabilities Australia, People with Disabilities Australia, the National Disability Lab, short-statured people of Australia, and last but not least, one very close to my heart, inclusive Rainbow Voices, L G B T I Q people with disabilities, we'll be hearing more about them. Has helped me gain support and make me feel stronger and more confident as an advocate. And last but not least, although I haven't personally used family advocacy or citizen advocacy as an advocate, I've had a lot of respect for what they do, particularly for advocating for the rights of children with disabilities in their families. Citizen advocacy makes an amazing difference in the lives of people with intellectual disability, many of whom have no families or friends, both in that isolation and loneliness that makes a world of difference.
Just on that very point, Margarita, Commissioner McEwen uh asked this question that in relation to advocacy, what can you tell the Royal Commission about those people who don't have access to advocates for people, for example, who might live in group homes? You've just mentioned the importance of citizen advocacy making a difference. Is there anything you want to expand on, on that? Captionings are gone?
It's disappeared again. So we've got a bit of a I T, artificial intelligence stuff happening. That will be good.
Is it come back?
No, it's coming up again.
Okay, so the question from Commissioner McEwen uh touched on that last part of your response. We spoke about citizen advocacy making a difference in the lives of people with intellectual disability, many of whom have no family or friends. So the question is, what can you say, if anything, in addition to what you've just said about uh people who don't have access to advocates? For example, people who may live in group homes.
Okay, so Commissioner McEwen, you put me a bit on the spot here, that's okay. Um I probably need to process that question if I know, can I come back to it?
And Mar- Margarita.
But I will come back to it, I promise.
Margarita, uh if there's any questions like that that we haven't talked about in advance and you'd like time to think about that, then I'm sure we can also come back to them later or maybe even think about a note that you want to send to me later and we can provide that to the commissioners. Right, I'm getting a nod there, all right. Well, can I come back to what needs to be in place to support ongoing advocacy gen- generally? This might raise some issues around funding, capacity building, access to information and information in accessible formats. So this is really a question about how you support advocacy. This is something I know you've got some strong views on. What would you like to say about that?
Um just getting that question from Commissioner McEwen out of my head, move that. My dyslexia, I'm just moving it now back to what I've got prepared. Okay, so my answer to this. Australia has obligations for the Convention of the Rights of People with Disabilities, better known as the C R P D, to provide disability advocacy programmes and support for disability people's organisations. Disability advocacy is very underfunded and yet it delivers significant possible outcomes for people with disabilities and society as a whole. Disability advocacy makes good economic sense and saves money. And being spent on expensive interventions and support in the area of employment, health, homeless, et cetera. All forms of advocacy have an important role and they all need to be adequately funded so that disability advocacy organisations don't have to turn people away and have long waiting lists and only work with people who are in crisis. We need more effort in building self-advocacy skills and providing us with information about our rights and where we can get help in accessible formats.
How are those skills built and how do you uh improve capacity for self-advocacy? Do you want to talk on some very particular things that could be done?
Well, yes, definitely support people to know their rights. Have more self-advocacy organisations and organisations supporting self-advocacy is like the excellence. Self-advocacy resource unit in Victoria, they do fabulous work and have a very, very long time. Provide training for people with disabilities on how to self-advocate so that we know how to speak up and be heard and how to navigate internal and external flight processes. Fund disability organisations to provide peer support, mentoring and self-advocacy training. The best self-advocacy training is provided by other self-advocates. Why not teach kids with disabilities about their rights and self-advocacy skills in schools in earlier part of their lives? This gives them some of the most useful knowledge and skills that they will need to use throughout their lives. What we do and not having access to information via technology are massive issues in the disability community. I've heard of self-advocacy groups giving out free mobiles with prepaid data packs so the person with disability is able to make phone calls, look up information and connect with other people with disabilities, friends and family. Simple and cheap idea that makes a big difference and means a person can self-advocate. We definitely saw this being very helpful during closures.
So I want to move to a, a different topic now, which is about community attitudes and particularly changing attitudes towards people with disability. And we've spoken a little earlier today with Angel Dixon and Paul Harper about community attitudes. You might have heard some of that discussion. But you wanted to say that it is important in thinking about community attitudes and change to not leave behind culturally responsive and trauma-informed practices. So in that context, I wanted to ask you, why is it important that people have the opportunity to share their experiences in a safe, supported and culturally responsive environment? And I know you have a lot of experience in doing this work and you've got a very good sense about what is actually culturally safe and responsive or trauma-informed, but you also know when people say it and it's not actually practised. So I wondered if you could tell the Royal Commission about that importance of sharing experiences in safe, supportive and culturally responsive environments.
Yeah, look, uh this is a, a question very close to my heart, uh professionally and personally. If I get a little bit emotional, please bear with me.
That's quite all right.
And it's different for everybody. Everybody has their own understanding of cultural safety and what it actually is. So it's vital to provide people with disabilities with skills to share their experience, but we need to be aware of the risk of sharing our stories and know how to do it in a way that's safe. It is okay not to share our stories too. We shouldn't expect it of ourselves or other people with disabilities. They have to share our stories, especially for things that have been harmful or that suffering and pain.
Take your time.
Inspirational porn and trauma porn are dangerous for people with disabilities. Our stories, if we chose to share them, are powerful thoughts and they can and do create change. But we, we need to do it in the safest way possible and going to know what risks are. Disability people's organisations provide culturally safe spaces for us to share our stories with each other. We have shared our history, similar experiences, we get each other. We know what it's like to be excluded, segregated, discriminated against. We don't need to explain to each other what it's easy to like. Trauma-informed supports are so important for our safety and for us to heal from the violence and injustice that we've lived through. We need more skilled trauma-informed workers, counsellors to take a trauma-informed approach in our peer support and self-advocacy spaces.
What needs to be done to build the framework around people to give them the opportunity to share their experiences in a way that is culturally responsive and trauma-informed?
I never thought I would say I have a shorter answer, but this one I do. I think it captures everything. We need a commitment coming out of the National Disability Strategy and the State Disability Plans and strategies to build a self-advocacy framework with focus on peer support and trainer-trainer approach to building a network of self-advocates who have experts in self-safe storytelling for advocacy.
Do you think that practices that are culturally responsive and trauma-informed can become vehicles for change of addressing attitudes and rethinking the way we approach disability?
Hmm, another great question. I could go talk to the cows, go home, but I don't have that time. However, this Royal Commission is an example of how people with disabilities hope that by telling their story, positive change will happen. We are sharing our stories, our experiences are understood and the terrible things that have happened have been done to us to prevent from happening again. We are sharing our stories that society will think differently about disability and see difference in bodies, mind, communication, health and just as normal part of being human. At the end of this Royal Commission, we need to continue to have justice settings where we, as people with disabilities, belied and are the centre of conversation about disability. We need to keep having spaces where we can share our stories, tell our truth and have avenues for making change from our expertise.
Now, I want to turn to a different topic. This might be a bit of a law topic. Uh but when we were talking about you thinking about the topics you wanted to speak to the Royal Commission about as a vision for an inclusive Australia, I asked you about the law and you've spoken earlier about advocacy and where you've had experience of discrimination, knowing what your legal rights are and how to exercise those rights. So I asked you whether you wanted to say anything about the Disability Discrimination Act, which is now thirty years old. And I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty of the Disability Discrimination Act, but I just thought I'd ask you what your reflections about thirty years of the D D A mean to you. Do you want to speak to that topic? If you don't, you don't have to.
Look, I could go because I just want to declare I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a human rights lawyer. Uh but I'm talking from my experiences, active experience as a person with a disability.
We can't be perfect, Miss Coppolino.
You don't have to answer that question. Okay, so reflections on thirty years of the D D A?
Thank you very much. For me, the D D A has mostly been disappointing appointment. We haven't seen the transformation in the lives of people with disabilities. Our board environment, workplaces, schools and public transport. We still see inaccessible buildings being built. We still have inaccessible public transport systems in our major cities. We still have special skills, shelter workshops, disability institutions like Wilfrid. Young people with disabilities living in nursing homes because they don't have anywhere else to live. That's not okay. The Disability Discrimination Act extensions and the very low bar. The Disability Discrimination Act exemptions and the very low bar of unjustified hardship means that D D A doesn't do what it needs for us. We see people with intellectual disabilities being paid a few dollars a day for working shelter workshops known as others' camps. It's unbelievable that the Commonwealth Department of Social Service got an exemption for the D D A so they continue to do discriminative fights, t- discriminative tool against people with intellectual disabilities. The D D A no longer is effective. We need to reform to ensure operational, that it works well for people with disabilities who are discriminated against so that D D A moves beyond disability rights and accessibility forward. The D D A hasn't been able to shift the view of people with disabilities as a burden. The risk, of course, being awarded against us when we make complaints to a court prevents us from using the law to resolve our discrimination complaints. And the people who discriminate against us know and exploit that power of imbalance. As well as needing reform of the D D A, we also need the Human Rights Act in Australia that protects and upholds the rights of people with disabilities. The D D A fails the requirements of Disability Action Plan, or better known as D A Ts, to take intersectional approach. The inclusive uh culture of businesses or workplace is not going to change unless we require it. It is an intersectional of identity. That discrimination might be occurring, but you can't use the D D A in that way.
So I think it's fair to say that thirty years of D D A has created disappointments to you, is that right?
Yes, um, you know, I got asked just not long ago uh to be actual on a forum to, to discuss it and I said, well, we'd like you to talk about positive experience. And I said, well, for me, you know, sixty two years and thirty of them, I've had the D D A. Uh, I'm still horrified with, you know, just how inaccessible uh things are. And constantly having to remind organisations that, you know, where's the quotas are, where are you consulting uh with people with disabilities and why are you designing products that are still inaccessible for people with disabilities? And you have to go back and we have to pay for modifications or reasonable adjustment for users where if they design with people with disabilities in mind, then we wouldn't need that money to uh create reasonable adjustment to use the inaccessibility of things in our lives, you know.
How well.
Don't get me on.
No, you, I think you and I could have spoken a lot about the D D A, but one uh part of the D D A which has caused you a lot of interest is section twenty nine of the D D A and commissioners, you've got a copy, I think we've distributed. It says it's um, and I'll just read it for people who may not have it readily to hand. So section twenty nine of the D D A is headed Administration of Commonwealth Laws and Programs. And it says it is unlawful for a person who performs any function or exercises any power under a Commonwealth law or for the purpose of a Commonwealth program or has any other responsibility for the administration of a Commonwealth law or the conduct of a Commonwealth program to discriminate against another person on the ground of the other person's disability in the performance of that function, the exercise of that power or the fulfillment of that responsibility. And when you, as a non-lawyer reading that, you say, well, shouldn't this mean that our politicians and those involved in developing policy in relation to disability have an understanding of their obligations under the D D A, particularly section twenty nine? So I'm going to ask you about that. As a non-lawyer, what do you think should be happening for our politicians and those involved in policymaking across the country when you think about what section twenty nine should be doing? What would you like to say about that?
Look, it's a bright question. Um, uh, I'm surprised that, you know, this often doesn't get talked about, so I would say that what we need to see is awareness raising of the D D A with politicians in government across country. It would be great for them to undertake disability awareness, equity and intersectional training. Intersectionality, I should say. We need politicians to have an awareness of their unconscious barriers and privileges when it comes to making decisions that impact on the lives of people with disabilities. We need to ensure that parliaments are accessible and parliamentary and electoral offices are accessible for people with disabilities, which they often aren't. If we can't get in the front door, how can we have conversations with politicians about what they're doing and what they're doing on our lives?
And then this led us to have a discussion about issues around governance, leadership and decision making. And I want to turn to this topic in terms of promoting opportunities for people with disability to participate in governance, leadership and decision making. So what are your personal reflections from being a member of several different boards on the importance of people with disability participating in governance, leadership and decision making? Because you, you, because you have been, you've been and you still are on some pretty important boards. So tell us about how you've um experienced the opportunity to show your leadership to participate in governance and be a decision maker.
Well, my answer to that is it is essential that people with disabilities are given opportunities and support to lead, to sit on boards and to be at the table where decisions are being made. Bad decisions are made when we're not there. Being, by being on leadership positions and being on board, we often educate those around us. The non-disabled leaders and directors of our disability and reasonable accommodation and intersectionality.
Now, just, I'm keeping an eye on the time, so I'm going to jump to a question because I want to stick on these issues about participation in decision making at a political level. For example, in state and federal parliaments. So can I ask you what needs to be done to support people with disabilities having that opportunity? So I'm going to jump a, a page if that's okay. So number sixteen we're up to.
Okay, I've got my part now.
All right, okay.
Thanks for my reasonable accommodation. And it didn't cost me anything. Some accommodations are, uh, sorry, I, I made that. Okay, so in answer to the question, we need to see more people with disabilities making decisions at political levels. This will significantly improve the disparity in inclusive quality of decision making and the lives of people with disabilities. Just as we're seeing political parties looking into the ideas of quota for women to address the gender imbalance and the equity, we need parties to be having a strategy for raising the numbers of politicians with disability. We also need to see more people with disabilities, at political staff, chief of staff, advisors, et cetera, so that people with disabilities are supporting decision making and as peers educating people with disabilities in the community.
And related to that, is it important for politicians to receive training on disability awareness and how to apply disability lens to their work? I know this connects in with our discussion a moment ago about section twenty nine of the D D A.
Okay, a co-parliamentary code of conduct and ethics, uh ethics for politicians and their staff would be a good idea. The code of conduct should include standards that prevent ableism, discrimination and violence against people with disabilities. The code of conduct needs to have independent oversight to handle complaints and assist with its implementation. Standing alongside the code of conduct should be training on disability awareness and unconscious bars and intersectionality that should be mandatory.
Do you think it's important for environments like parliaments to be inclusive and welcoming to people with disability? And if your answer to that is yes, how can that be achieved given the grandeur and the formality of parliaments? How do you do that?
Nothing is impossible. Like, like you're telling it, we all know that. Things can happen and be achieved. But before we see more people uh disabilities entering parliament, we need to make parliament buildings and parliamentary offices fully accessible so that we can actually get into the space. It would be good for parliaments to think about how they apply the D D A, that word again, both at their workplace and places for people with disabilities to access their literates or workers or politicians. Assessable guide tours of parliament audience for the deaf, hard of hearing, blind, vision impaired, deafblind people would help men and women of the disability feel much more welcome.
The last topic I want to talk to you about is an overarching theme and that is what needs to be in place to achieve transparency and accountability in the realisation of human rights under the C R P D. That's an enormous, I don't know how you're going to answer that in the time that's available. It's a very large topic. But I know you've thought about the key points you want to make in relation to that question.
Yeah, I did a lot of pondering and thinking, uh bouncing off. Um, this is what we've come up with. All of Australia's laws to be compliant with the C R P D, adding the rights, Convention of the Rights of People with Disabilities for those. We need an increased awareness across government and communities on the C R P D. We need the government to remove interpret- interpretation declarations against Article twelve on legal capacity, Article seventeen on forced treatment and Art- Article eighteen on the migration of people with disabilities. These interpretive declarations inflict violence and discrimination on people with disabilities. We need government to implement all of the nineteen, uh sorry, the two thousand and nineteen concluding observations and recommendation from the last time Australia agreed before the C R P D can do. That's all I have to say.
Is there anything else that you would like to say? Or while you have the six commissioners here about uh what you would like to see in the future or even your expectations of this Royal Commission?
Uh, if I can be cheeky and bold, uh.
Be cheeky and bold.
I think I have the part for the, uh, I would like to see people with disabilities involved in the recommendations of the D R C with final report, uh, on chair, but I'm just putting it out there. Um, because I think that would be co-designing of recommendations, whether that's possible or not. Uh, I'm not, but, uh, more importantly, I particularly want to say that nothing is impossible. Uh, I am, um, I'm, I don't want to say, I'm saying in the sense that I am really pleased that there are lots of young people with disabilities in the community. I'm excited by them taking the lead from here. We need to get it right for them. We need to support them to make a difference. If we don't do it, then it's never going to happen. That's all from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita, for your contribution, uh not only giving evidence today, but all the work that you've done behind the scenes uh with the Royal Commission. We're very grateful. Thank you very much.
Ms Copelino, I would like to echo that on behalf of the commissioners. Thank you for your contributions, multiple contributions to the work of the Royal Commission. Thank you for your thoughtful and your bold and cheeky evidence that you've given today. It's very helpful to us. Uh, I know that the views that you've expressed uh represent those of the very many people with uh who have experience of multiple forms of disadvantage, that is people with disability from whom we've heard. Your evidence uh has been very powerful as far as that is concerned. Thank you also for the kind words you said about the Royal Commission in the course of your evidence. And on behalf of Ms Eastman, uh I thank you uh for your commendation to her for asking on my count five great questions. Thank you very much and I'm sure Ms Eastman thanks you too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and may I also thank Matthew Bowden.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I thank you also to Matthew Bowden who's here uh providing support and also in his own right for all of the work that he's done around disability advocacy. Chair, he's often been very much behind the scenes, but really supporting our witnesses as they've given evidence in the Royal Commission. So again, we're indebted to your assistance. Thank you very much.
Yes, let me again add to that, Mr Bowden. Thank you so much for your help as well. Thank you.
So Chair, that concludes the evidence today. I think Margarita may take on notice the question that Commissioner McKeown asked and there's one follow-up matter Commissioner Galbally raised with me, but we might follow that through as well. And uh that concludes the proceedings for today and we'll resume Chair at ten a m tomorrow, Brisbane time.
Thank you again, Ms Copelino. We'll now adjourn until ten. Thank you.